Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight on this championship Monday evening here at the City of Lakewood. This is the meeting of the full Lakewood City Council. Today is June 20th, shortly after 7:30. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Crosstalk).
We now observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Anderson.
President.
Bullock.
Here.
Litton.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
Mallon.
Here.
O'Leary.
Here.
O'Malley.
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of Council House June 6, 2016.
Move to dispose without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item 1, Committee of the Whole Report Regarding June 13th and June 20th, 2016. Read it whole, please.
Thank you. To start off on our Committee of the Whole meeting, June 13th, we discussed extensively proposed ordinance 1-16, which is before us tonight. We discussed in detail the various changes that have been made throughout the drafting process, including the most recent changes, things like the number of members of the Human Rights Commission, as well as a couple substantive changes to the remedies provision, and a reduction in the number of employees that would be required before an employer has subjected the ordinance from five to four, bringing the ordinance in line with the state code in that respect. A number of other changes were reflected, and we also heard from Law Director Butler detailed recounting of those changes this evening. On June 13th, Committee of the Whole did recommend adoption by full council this evening, and on earlier this evening, we again recommended adoption following a clarification revision of the substitute version of the ordinance that's before us tonight. We also heard this evening a update on council's technology. Our chamber progress is moving forward. We should hopefully have the audio visual online by the last meeting in July, if not then by our meeting when we return from our August recess. So we have that to look forward to. In the meantime, hopefully, our audio visual continues to work for a few more weeks. In addition to that, we had a brief discussion of proposed resolution 887116, the planning of the Foundation Task Force, and found out that we can expect to meet with Deborah Reed of Thompson Heim for additional counsel and advice on that sometime in early to mid-July. And that was the business conducted by Committee of the Whole this evening. I move that that report be received in five seconds. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Item 2, Ordinance 116, an ordinance to amend certain provisions of Chapter 516, Chapter 537, Chapter 142, Chapter 501, Chapter 1327 of the codified ordinances, to ensure that all persons within the city have equal access to employment, housing, public accommodations, and education. Please substitute for Ordinance 116 placed on first reading and refer to the Committee of the Whole, 11916, second reading to 116.
Thank you. We're joined by a number of individuals, and we did have the benefit of hearing very moving testimony at our Committee of the Whole meeting on June 13th. And we're very fortunate to have a number of those individuals with us again this evening, as well as others. I would like to start by recognizing our state representative who's here this evening to speak on this ordinance, Nikki Antonia.
Thank you. It's good to be here. It's always good to be back at City Hall. A lot of memories with being here. I am here tonight to speak in support of this ordinance, to add my voice to the others that I know are going to speak here tonight about why this is so important, what it means to each and every individual, who this affects, and frankly, it affects everyone. Certainly, the LGBT community, but this kind of an ordinance affects our businesses, affects our city and our community. And Lakewood, by passing this ordinance, will serve as a beacon and an example to other communities, because instead of the hate and the bigotry and the horrific actions of last week in Orlando, this community of Lakewood says, "We're actually stepping up in support, in inclusion. We respond to the differences of the folks in our community by actually adding protections in and by saying, 'Not only are the people of the LGBT community welcome in this community, we acknowledge that they're part of the fabric of this community. We also believe that there should be some protections in place for all members of the LGBT community,' and that it's a good thing to do this. It's important to take a stand this way." You know, it's also coming up on the one-year anniversary of a landmark Supreme Court decision for marriage equality. It's interesting to me to be in these chambers and know that many of these issues over the years were discussed here. Sometimes Lakewood is ahead of the curve by so much. Sometimes there are folks within leadership, like Madeline Kane, mayor, who was ahead of her time with putting a rainbow flag out in front of City Hall, and I just wanted to acknowledge my appreciation of the leadership of the mayor this past week for flying that flag at half-staff. It means so much to the members of our community, my community, and a part of the LGBT community, to say, "We're with you. We are mourning with you." And that was incredibly powerful and much appreciated. There have been City Council members like Michael Skindel and Nancy Roth, who brought forward legislation for domestic partner benefits way ahead of their time. And this council has been incredibly forward-thinking and proactive, and I just want to tell you how appreciative I am. As I was going back through my files, I was talking to Law Director Butler earlier when we both served on council. He carried the ordinances that I had been working on for gender identity and inclusion in the previous ordinances that you're amending to actually improve today. And he carried that forward for me to introduce them so we could pass them before I went to the State House. So that kind of collaboration is the kind of collaboration, forward-thinking, that is really what is at the heart of City Council and what's at the heart of this community. And so, we often say right now, we said last year when marriage equality was passed, that love wins, and I still believe that to be true. Respect and inclusion are the strongest weapons that we have against bigotry and hate, and I applaud the work of this council and the administration for taking these steps today. Thank you very much. I'm very proud of all of you.
Thank you. We do also have a separately appearing docket item this evening for our next speaker, but I want to recognize Patty Ryan from the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce who's here to speak tonight as well. Patty Ryan?
Hello.
Thank you, Patty.
Good evening, everybody. Again, I'm Patty Ryan, and I'm the CEO and President of the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce. And I have a letter from our Board of Directors that I'd like to read to the council. Dear Council President O'Leary and members of City Council, the Lakewood Chamber Board and our Legislative and Government Affairs Task Force have been following the developments of this pending human rights legislation currently in front of you. The legislation would amend certain provisions of the codified ordinance of the City of Lakewood to include the LGBTQ community as a protected class in areas of employment, housing, public accommodations, and education. We are in support of this legislation and commend council for taking measures to ensure equitable equality for all its citizens. Organization's mission is to serve the business community of Lakewood. Therefore, our perspective when examining this legislation was to determine whether it is fair to all businesses and whether compliance is reasonably within their ability. It is in our opinion that the proposed legislation is not overly complicated to comply with and that the remedies are fair and not excessively punitive. We also believe that this ordinance is good for business. Recent research indicates that an inclusive approach to service and employment is critical to establishing a positive work culture, which leads to higher productivity, which leads to higher performance. This ordinance would also strengthen an employer's human resource policies, thus helping with the attraction and retention of qualified employees. Our city is proud of our diversity and our reputation for acceptance, and this is also reflected in the business community. Our business citizens want to do what is right, and they want to do what is good for business. Therefore, the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce supports the passing of this human rights ordinance. Sincerely, Patricia Ryan, CEO and President, Lakewood Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next up to speak, we have Elena Jovum, Executive Director of Equality Ohio.
Thank you so much, Council. And I'd also invite a colleague or partner organization, Rob Rivera from the Cleveland Stonewall Democrats, to join me up here tonight. I provided a statement, I will keep it brief because I think the most important testimony tonight can be from those who are personally affected by your brave and courageous actions here tonight, and I want them to have plenty of time to speak. But I just want to say that Ohio is one of 28 states that does not have statewide non-discrimination protections. There is no statewide law. The only way that we are able to provide these protections to our citizens is through the leadership of municipalities such as Lakewood here tonight. A job lost is a family that is put at risk. Housing discrimination disrupts lives, and discrimination is humiliating and it has real consequences to real people. Without statewide protections, it falls to cities like Lakewood to take the step to make discrimination illegal. And I'm so proud that Lakewood is doing this like more than 200 municipalities across the country have done so far. Lakewood has an opportunity to become the 15th city in Ohio tonight to provide basic non-discrimination protections in housing, employment, and public accommodations. Many residents live their lives comfortably every day thanks to the very welcoming environment that you have created here in Lakewood by your neighbors, by your businesses, by your faith communities. But thank you for taking that comfort and putting legality behind it. Thank you for making it a legal reality. I applaud your efforts here tonight and hope to announce to our Equality Ohio memberships statewide that you are the latest addition in a growing list of fully welcoming communities and that that next 15th city is Lakewood, Ohio. Thank you.
Pardon my voice, I was downtown last night. I want to thank Elena for allowing me just a few seconds up here. As members of council and the mayor know, Stonewall Dems, we try to educate, endorse, and elect pro-equality Democrats, and I'm looking at a room full of them right here. We are proud of you. A quick personal note, I was in this same room about 16 years ago when council at that time voted down domestic partner benefits in what was frankly, an ugly setting at the time, and it was stunning, I think, to a lot of people. And now I come before you as someone married to his partner, someone proud of Lakewood, proud of each of you up there. This is not better late than never. This is as important as it was, I've been, 16 years ago. So please note, what you do here tonight matters. It matters in every way which Elena described. It matters to people personally, whether they're gay or straight, and it sends a message that Lakewood is the community that everyone has yet another reason to be proud of. So thank you very much for what you're doing tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker signed in is Lauren Dockery.
Hello. My name is Lauren Dockery, and I'm here in support of the ordinance 116. I've called Lakewood home for three years, since moving from Los Angeles, California to Cleveland in 2012. I've come to love this region. Its diversity and its spirit and grit are what call me to stay in this area. With my friends and neighbors in the region, I frequent Lakewood's restaurants, stores, and cultural events and nightlife. I have loved participating in the arts and culture of this region that it affords to its residents. I moved to Lakewood from Cleveland in 2013, and I live in an intentional community with other young people of faith in the rectory of Church of the Ascension. As a queer woman of color and a Christian, finding a faith community and neighborhood that was welcoming in all aspects of my identity was very important to me. These past three years, living, working, and worshiping in Lakewood have offered me support and deep connections. I realize that I do not represent the majority of this city when it comes to race or sexual orientation, and I realize that I do not represent the majority of people in my age bracket as a person of faith. So I rely on this city's leaders to create laws and policies that support and protect everyone. As a person of faith, I am guided by a belief that every human being has dignity and worth, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, mental health status, physical disability, faith background, or lack of faith background. I recognize that religion is sometimes used to oppose efforts for inclusion and protection, but my faith encourages me to widen my circle and embrace spaces outside of my comfort zone and to treat others with loving kindness. Lakewood is a city that has a reputation for lived equality. I know that I can walk down the street in Lakewood holding my girlfriend's hand without fear of danger. I feel confident that my friends and fellow congregation members can get a job and hold it without being fired because of who they are, who they love. That lived equality for the LGBTQ community exists for the most part in Lakewood, and it's time we have legal equality as well. I support this Lakewood ordinance 116 because it provides assurance and protection for me and for my friends and neighbors that our city supports. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Becky Cross.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Becky Cross, and this is my wife, Taylor Bus. On December 31st, 2015, Taylor and I got married right here in Lakewood, not only as a symbol of our love, but also as a symbol to mark an end of a historic year for marriage equality. It's hard to believe that in just a few short days, we'll be celebrating the first anniversary of the U.S. Supreme Court's decision to enact marriage equality. Over three years ago, Taylor and I made a choice to purchase our first home in Lakewood. The charming front porches, walk and bikability, location to our places of work, and delicious restaurants were just some of the many reasons we call Lakewood our home. I, a budding IT professional, and Taylor, a hospice and palliative social worker, both value hard work, responsibility, and personal and professional growth. As young professionals beginning our careers, it's critical for us to work for companies who judge us based solely on our performance and contributions. Nothing more, nothing less. All people, including those who are gay or transgender, should be treated fairly and equally by the laws of our city and should have the opportunity to earn a living and provide for themselves and their families. As a same-sex couple and Lakewood residents, we are motivated to support equal rights and protections for everyone. We believe that nobody should have to live in fear of being legally fired for reasons that have nothing to do with their job performance. My wife and I are very much in favor of this ordinance and proud to call Lakewood our home. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Randy Webb.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name's Randy Webb. I'm the president and owner of Beacon Gasket and Seals Company here in Lakewood. Two years ago, one of my daughters let us know she was a lesbian. Leading up to that point, fear kept her in the closet, hiding from bullies at school and herself. The closet can be a dangerous place. In our case, self-harm happened in that closet. Today, she is out, she is strong, she is proud of who she is, and her mother and I could not be more proud of the woman she is becoming. Supporting our daughter didn't come without a cost. We've lost family, church, community, friends because of that support, and quite frankly, we're better for it. We were at the Pittsburgh Pride Parade when we learned of the Orlando tragedy, and there's no way to protect your LGBT child, friend, family member, or employee from the horrors of this world. To keep them safe at all times, to constantly watch over them. But here in Lakewood, you have the ability to make their lives a little more fair. Like the other classes of protected people, you can protect the LGBT person's right to housing, employment, education, public accommodations, et cetera. You have the support of Beacon Gasket and Seals Company and its owners. Please pass Lakewood Ordinance 116 and make Lakewood a safer place for everyone. Thank you.
Our next speaker, and forgive me if I butcher this pronunciation, is Vania Sharapita.
Yeah, you're in the ballpark. I'm Vania Sharapita, and I am a transgender woman. I was born as a boy in 1964, but I lived my life full-time as a woman. Even though I knew at a very early age that my birth-assigned gender did not match my true identity, it took me over 30 years to actually confront this conflict, and another 15 years after that to finally resolve it. This was because when I was growing up in the late 1960s and early 70s, there was not the transgender visibility in this country that we have today in 2016. As a child, I had no one to compare myself to, except for occasional examples of gender variance on television and in movies presented as sensationalized, ridiculed, or tragic. I did not understand my gender, I was afraid of my thoughts, and I decided that my femininity was to remain a secret forever. We have come a long ways as a society since then, and we now understand that it is impossible for someone born lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or queer to change the way that they are born. I know this firsthand. I tried, and I tried, and I tried again for all of my childhood, for most of my young adulthood, and into middle age. And then, I planned my suicide. Ultimately, I did not go through with it. Instead, I finally shared my secret with everyone, and I was surprised and most fortunate to find the love, support, and eventual understanding of family, friends, and community. Not everyone is as lucky as I was. I was able to stop fighting against myself and start living a genuine and productive life. I now consider myself lucky to be a woman in Lakewood, Ohio, in this amazing time of visibility and acceptance. There is truly not a day that goes by that I am not overwhelmed with gratitude that I can present to the world my genuine feminine self. I rent a beautiful apartment on Lakewood's west side. I shop at the locally-owned stores and dine at the locally-owned restaurants. I enjoy Lakewood's parks and beautiful neighborhoods. And I am a regular at Lakewood City Schools, concerts, and assemblies where I cheer on my sixth-grade son, and as I did with his daughter before him, being with pride. Again, not everyone is as lucky as I, and the fact that I am transgender has not kept me from enjoying any of these experiences, and I have personally not felt any aggression from the businesses, landlords, or community in general, as I enjoy these things. There are some in the current political environment that would have the LGBTQ community invisible again, as it was in my youth. They are afraid of what they do not understand, and they would use this fear as a justification to legalize discrimination. I am grateful that the City of Lakewood is not taking such action, but is instead looking to join many other Ohio cities and over 200 other cities all across the country that extend non-discrimination protections to include sexual orientation and gender identity or expression. As a passionately active member of the Lakewood community, I ask you to pass this ordinance and legally support the current community trajectory toward an environment of mutual understanding and acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Arone.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Arone. My wife Stacy and I have been residents of Lakewood for about three years now. I really thank you for listening to us today. As a straight, married man, I think it's important to be publicly supportive of the LGBTQ community, to show that these issues are not simply relegated to a small segment of our city's population, but are extremely important to our entire community. Now Lakewood is generally a great place to call home, so thank you for that. But with that comes great responsibility, and these current non-discrimination codes in our city need to be updated to include sexual orientation and gender identity or expression. These updates would mean that in Lakewood, everybody has equal footing and a fair chance to live, work, and provide for their families. Now I wish it was not important for me to make this statement and that sexual orientation and gender identity or expression were irrelevant to people having these opportunities. I wish we lived in a world where we could all be accepted for who we are and not discriminated against for the way that we love. I wish the world was a place where all humans were supportive of other humans, not in spite of our difference, but rather because of them, and where people were judged by their actions and not their characteristics. That world is a place where all people can strive for greatness, where we all have fair opportunities and are empowered to achieve our fullest potential. Unfortunately, that's not the world in which we currently live. But whether I like to admit it or not, being a straight, white male in this world opens doors for me that may not be open for others. Now I came from humble beginnings, yet I was provided opportunities to work my way up. I was raised in a single-parent family by a hard-working mother. We had no car, and I had to rely on public transportation in order to attend college. I worked two jobs while being a full-time student to pay my way through school, eventually becoming the first person from the mother's side of my family to graduate from college. Now those experiences provided me with more opportunities to achieve my dreams: internships, entry-level jobs, promotions. Eventually, I met a woman, fell in love, and got married. Now with a career that's perfect for me and the woman of my dreams, we chose to move here to Lakewood for more opportunities in our future: start a family, buy a home, become ingrained in this community. Unfortunately, those opportunities are not currently available for all residents of Lakewood, and I personally find that unacceptable. I urge you to go through with this and update these non-discrimination codes so that all of your residents and my neighbors have the opportunities that I have to achieve their dreams. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers signed in are Jim and Charlie Cunningham.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Jim Cunningham. My husband and aunt-
and I personally find that unacceptable. I urge you to go through with this and update these nondiscrimination codes so that all of your residents and my neighbors have the opportunities that I have to achieve their dreams. Thank you.
Our next speakers signed up are Jim and Charlie Cunningham.
Good evening. I'm Reverend Jim Cunningham. My husband and I live in Lakewood, and I am a semi-retired pastor chaplain in the United Church of Christ. And I am proud to introduce my husband of twenty-one years, Charlie Cunningham, a greater Cleveland native who realized he was transgender male three years ago.
Hi, I'm Charlie. I was born Charli, and I was born with female body parts and a male brain. This sudden realization that I was indeed a male was the turning point of my life. After fifty years of grueling depression and shame, I was finally at peace. The depression immediately lifted, and my life had finally begun. My family and friends were so happy at my revelation of being transgender because the person they loved and knew and had seen suffer for so long was no longer a truly tortured soul. Being transgender has, however, created problems for me as it does for many transgender people. We moved to Lakewood largely because of its reputation for the community's respect for diversity, but I have faced intimidating behavior. Because of my medical condition, I cannot take male hormones. Thus, some people see me as female, while others see me as male. Although I try to avoid eye contact, often I am met with questioning, judgmental, and humiliating stares and glares. I have been asked to prove my identity as male. The Ohio Bureau of Motor Vehicles recognizes me as male as the Social Security and Medicare, along with all my medical providers. We were shocked to learn that in Lakewood I have no legal protection against discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations or protection against intimidation.
As one who loves his husband very much, I am very anxious when he goes out in public, especially by himself. We and other members of the LGBT community need you to send a clear signal that discrimination and intimidation will not be tolerated in Lakewood. We are pleased our Lakewood civic leaders will tonight take a stand for respect and human rights and protect our LGBT residents and visitors, including my husband. This ordinance will further support Lakewood as a welcoming, safe, and inclusive community for all people. And we thank you very much for permitting us to share our story with you.
Thank you.
Our next speakers are Shannon and Michael Miller.
I'm Shannon, this is my husband, Michael. Thank you for hearing us today. We are new residents to Lakewood and parents of two children. We're here to present testimony to support that ordinance before you. It was just a little over a week ago that everything happened in Orlando, and we know that the families there are still navigating the shock and ache of losing their children who did nothing besides meet friends for a night of fun at a popular LGBT pub. We pray for them and stand before you with their memories tugging at our hearts. In August of 2014, changes in employment required our family to move somewhere where everything was new. We could live anywhere within driving distance from my work on the east side of Cleveland. And with so many choices of areas rich in culture and resources, Lakewood emerges as our favorite: good schools, close parks and trails, a strong library, art center, and most importantly, an inclusive and safe place for our children to live. We chose Lakewood in large part because of its reputation for acceptance and inclusion. We have two children who are the center of our world. And June is a special month for us. Both of my children were born in June, and both were assigned male at birth. First time I held them in my arms, they were so little and beautiful and soft and vulnerable. And I made the promise to both of them on the day they were born to love them unconditionally and to protect them. The story of how we discovered that one of our children's true gender identity was different than the biological sex assigned at birth was one of understanding and growth that would fill many, many pages. Although we did not fully understand at eighteen months when he declared, "I'm a girl," that we should treat her as the girl she truly is, we did understand that we had a difficult road ahead of us. So I made the promise again to both of my children to love them unconditionally and to protect them. In the beginning, it was easier to protect them. Our world was small and was only people we knew. It expanded in preschool where a new group of people had questions about my child who divide gender norms. Our world grew again in elementary school, and so did our child's need to express her true gender identity. Despite our unwavering and unconditional love, our grip on protecting her started to slip in kindergarten when she experienced anxiety, fear of going to school on a daily basis, and nightmares. My child was forced to grow up at six, and she told me there will always be people who hate me without even knowing me. I cried for days at the loss of her innocence and at the truth in her words. Laws continue to be made to marginalize the LGBTQ community. Violence and hate crimes continue. It's hard not to feel helpless in protecting our child. As we speak, the families of the forty-nine people killed at the LGBTQ pub in Orlando are arranging funerals and saying goodbye while we talk about bathrooms and basic human rights. The ordinance you are considering today would be one step further in protecting many, including our child, but would protect her from the type of intimidation she has already experienced, and it was worth the struggle protecting her from the bullies that we've all grown once. As our children grow, our ability to protect them shrinks. We rely more and more on those in our community. We chose Lakewood and have become part of the community based on our belief that it is a place that is safe for our children to grow well. We are relying on you now, and I ask you to please help us protect our daughter. Please help us create a world that is safe for both of our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker signed up on this agenda item is Pam Latula.
Hi, Pam Latula, 11813 Clifton. Didn't know I was going to speak on this issue tonight, but I'm glad I'm here. It's hard to follow those really heartfelt stories. In the seventies, I had a friend who said, "Let's go out for a drink, Pam." And he was very nervous. And it took him a long time. We were very good friends. And finally, Dave said, "I'm gay." And I looked at him, and I said, "You're the same man I knew yesterday, Dave." And for me, I was lucky. I was over the whole issue immediately in the seventies. In the eighties was my introduction to the lesbian community. The discrimination that I found that they endured at that time and still prevails was even worse than what I had found for the men. I moved back to Cleveland late eighties, and in the eighties and nineties, I was shocked because I was in Indiana in the eighties, and that's where I found out that Lakewood had a healthy number of gays and lesbians and transgendered. There was a, you know, a higher-than-typical percentage of the population. I had no idea, I was raised here. I came back to Lakewood to find out and was shocked to see people beating up people who were gay in the nineties, in the two thousands. I was shocked. My friend was also from Cleveland. He was an attorney and a trust officer at National City Bank. And I was one of many women in the nineties and the two thousands, he doesn't live in Ohio anymore, who would go to him for corporate functions because you couldn't be gay. You had to have a family. You had to look like you had some female with you. So we would help him. I would like to say that things are better, and they are. And I want to bring out a bright spot. I teach just a few hours a week at the Beck Center. The children that I teach are basically from eight to twelve, sometimes up to fifteen. I see a real difference, and I'm more of an accepting, at least in that culture, at the cultural arts center here in Lakewood, and that's a good thing. But I do still see discrimination, and I hear things throughout the community, even in Lakewood, that is really disturbing because I have friends in the LGBT community, and I have family members in that community. We have a history in the United States of having to legislate equality for minorities, child abuse, elder abuse, basic rights in a number of different areas. It is sad to say that we have to legislate for the rights of this particular group as well. But I am so glad, I'm so glad to see that Lakewood is stepping up to this and is going to do this for our people in Lakewood, and it will grow from here. So I want to just say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you," because you have work to do still in this area, and legislating it will help. It's not going to solve anything, but it will help, and thank you very much. Thanks.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor to council members for additional comments or discussion from...
Council.
Councilwoman Marks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like, again, to... Can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now?
No.
I think this works. Does this work?
It's working for you. Let's see if it's working for me.
Thanks for bearing with us here.
Thank you. That's better, right? First of all, I'd like to thank those people who came again tonight to share their testimony. I was very moved when I heard you a week ago, and for you to come and share this again publicly means a great deal to all of us on council, so I can't thank you enough. This ordinance means a lot to me. I was actually quite surprised when I joined council and found that the rights of all weren't protected in Lakewood. And I've lived here since the eighties, and I thought they were. So I feel very passionate about this. And I just, I'm proud of our council here in Lakewood to take this on with such seriousness, and all of us truly feel that this is such very important legislation. I would just like to read to you a quote that I came across, and this is by Bobby Kennedy from 1966 in South Africa, but I think it's very relevant to where we are today. He said, "It is from numberless diverse acts of courage and belief that human history is shaped. Each time a man stands up for an ideal or acts to improve the lot of others or strikes out against injustice, he sends forth a tiny ripple of hope. In crossing each other from a million different centers of energy and dairy, those ripples build a current that can sweep down the mightiest walls of oppression and resistance." And I'm proud that we here in Lakewood are taking a stand, and we're making a ripple. And I want to thank all of you who are here tonight in support of this ordinance. I'm very proud to be a part of this. Thanks.
Councilwoman O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I just want to start by thanking those who took the time to come here tonight and either voice your support or just show your support by being here. You know, it was around this time last year, I think, that this ordinance was originally introduced by Council President O'Leary and Councilwoman Marks. And it was around that time as well that Lakewood Alive held a forum at the library entitled, "Is Equality Alive in Lakewood?" It was a great forum, and many of the people who were here tonight were there. And it disturbed me a little bit, though, that that was even a question. And I got to thinking about why that might be. And I can't really blame our school board, who have been terrific in setting forth and enforcing bullying guidelines, and I can't blame our business community, who are almost to a single one welcoming and inclusive, and can't really blame this mirror or any past mirror who have been terrific on equality issues. But as Rob Rivera alluded to, I think a lot of that question mark was drawn in this room over the years. And, you know, I was fifteen years old when that vote in 2000 occurred against domestic partner benefits. And, you know, I think for a lot of people who, you know, are part of the LGBT community to have that happen, that council in this community would vote down something as basic as extending health insurance to the partners of gay workers here, it was more than just a legislative defeat. And I think back as well on the fights that happened in this room over a flag, a flag pole. And I think to reading in the paper and hearing about and experiencing having one councilperson actually suggest moving the pride flag pole to the city dump. And, you know, I think it's hard if you're not a member of the LGBT community to really grasp what kind of an impact that has on you to have a councilperson say that this is what we think of you. And to be, I've talked to so many LGBT residents of this community who have over the years as those things have happened. And we've had some basic things like non-binding pride resolutions get several no votes. It's just, it's not hard for those people to think I'm not welcome here when the representative body of the citizens of this community make votes like that. But I'm pleased and very proud that since then, we've made tremendous progress as a community to sort of write those really, I think, disgraceful instances. And I think the community, it's funny because about ten months after that vote, or after that proposal, the resolution to move the pride flag and the flag pole to the dump, we had issue one here in the state of Ohio, which was to make same-sex marriage unconstitutional. And that passed by a sadly overwhelming margin by the state of Ohio. Lakewood, however, I believe more than maybe any other city in the entire state, this was a thing that passed two to one statewide. The citizens of Lakewood voted two to one against it. And so it really, I think, a lot of times there have been instances where the city government has been a little out of step with where the rest of our community is on this. And I just want to acknowledge Representative Antonio, who was here for all the work that she did when she was a council member. Director Butler, for his support, former Councilwoman Butler. Want to thank the mayor. You know, it was, it took thirteen years, but thanks to the mayor and former Councilwoman Smith, Councilwoman Monique Smith, we had, we finally were able to extend domestic partner benefits. And it was because of their leadership. You know, one by one, sending messages like that, that, you know, this really bringing us in line with what really is and always has been a very welcoming and inclusive community. And, you know, now we're here, I think, what is really the final frontier of a fight to make our laws in line with what our community has long believed. And I just want to talk for a moment about the merits of this ordinance. And the first, in that we are prohibiting discrimination in areas of private employment. And we already have protections for many other statuses when it comes to private employment. There are protections that are granted at the federal and state level, but since we don't have those, unfortunately, I'm really proud that we're taking a step to do that here in Lakewood. And I'm so grateful for Patty Ryan and the Lakewood Chamber for stepping up and offering that statement of support, which I think is so critical to say, not only is this the right thing to do, it's really good for businesses, and it's good for really the image of our community. You know, we've also are offering, are passing in this law prohibiting discrimination in areas of public employment. And I've talked to folks, when I talk about this ordinance, I've had some folks actually say, "Well, is that really necessary? Does that actually happen?" I've personally witnessed it. I personally... I personally witnessed people denying service in a restaurant for being gay. It was a humiliating experience and I’m pleased, hopeful that that doesn’t happen very often, at least not here, but to the extent that it could possibly happen to one person, it’s really important that we step up and we ban that. And I’ve had folks say, “Well, you know, wouldn’t it be easier if you’re just, if somebody doesn’t want, would you really want to dine in a restaurant where you’re not welcome? Wouldn’t it be helpful? Wouldn’t it be better for you to just go somewhere else?” And I’m really grateful that, you know, in 1960 in Greensboro, North Carolina, that four college students who could have gotten lunch in plenty of places in that city sat at that counter and said, “We’re not moving until we’re served lunch.” And we’re better as a country for it. And shortly thereafter, we saw desegregation and nondiscrimination ordinances being passed for issues related to race. And finally, you know, I wanted to say a word about the housing protections that we’re offering to our transgender citizens, in which we already have protections for sexual orientation. You know, housing, I think is such a fundamental, fundamental to our existence, fundamental to our safety and fundamental to what I think we all think is the American dream. Being able to rent or own a home is something that everybody should have equal access to and I would hate to think that it would be denied to somebody just because of who they are. So again, I think that we’ve made incredible strides as a city, as a government, over the years. This is really necessary in Lakewood. We are actually number two in the entire state of Ohio in number of households that are headed by same-sex couples. So it’s relevant to a lot of people here who are going to be directly affected and it just follows in line and really, I think, brings full circle a lot of the terrific changes that we’ve made over the years. So we have an opportunity tonight, Mr. Chair, I think, to really send a message, once and for all, that Lakewood is a welcoming and inclusive community and let freedom ring for all our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, just a few quick points. I appreciate the discussion on this topic tonight. I want to also extend my appreciation for the members of council who have worked so hard on this, as well as members of the administration, our friends with Equity Ohio, the Chamber, et cetera. So I really appreciate that hard work on that, that’s the first point. Second point is in regards to the idea that this is bigger than just an ordinance that will impact Lakewood. This could have some regional impact as well because of the employment protections. All right, so if, for example, you’re an employee in Lakewood and there’s only two or three others that work for that company in Lakewood, but that company, you know, hires more folks throughout the county, well, that still could apply to circuit protection. So this is, this is, in some instances, a regional policy and it’s a potential regional step forward. And my last point is to again characterize the testimony we heard tonight is completely courageous and I applaud each of you for coming here tonight. I happen to work as a professional in the clinical mental health care field and the youngster I’m working with right now went through some trauma and is currently gender confused and it’s been the preeminent professional difficulty in my life to get that girl’s parents to authorize some trauma-focused cognitive behavior for their child. And it’s a, it’s a challenge that sort of grips me every day because I still have this time and trying to get her the help that she needs. So as much as we work as hard as we can and mightily on legislation, policy and having these bigger pictures in mind, it is also, it’s no substitute for individuals having individual conversations with folks. And I’m hoping that Lakewood is taking additional steps toward where people are more comfortable to talk about life. Right? I always kid my, my wife that we’re always taking pictures of our children whenever they’re laughing and smiling. We’re not taking pictures when there’s a challenge and when there’s a struggle. That’s sometimes where we learn the most. And I’m just hoping that our community is advancing toward a place where we can have challenging conversations with each other in a way that helps advance all of Lakewood, all the region and perhaps the nation as well. So again, my great appreciation for all those who have worked so hard on this. I’m obviously more than happy to support it and thanks for letting me speak on this.
Mr. President? Thank you. Other members of council? Councilwoman Bullock?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. A lot of good speaking work done by the authors of this ordinance, so I’m going to give a tip of the hat to the legislative mechanics. That includes, of course, Councilman O’Malley, but also yourself, Mr. President, and Cindy, Councilwoman Marks, who worked hard on this last year. Mayor Summers is really an author, co-author of this ordinance, as is our law director, because of their support and thoughtfulness and receptiveness throughout. Also, a lot of this good bit of work by our attorneys from the private sector who brought some expertise. So job well done because what the ordinance tonight does is actually take quite a significant step beyond anything that Lakewood has ever had before, which would be to create a commission to receive complaints, to better yet, educate, to avoid problems and to do all the quasi-jurisprudential work needed to make a reality of the aspirations of the ordinance, which is to have equality, nondiscrimination, nonharassment in many spheres of our community, housing, employment and others. That’s a big deal. That’s something that goes way beyond what we’ve done. I do want to acknowledge, though, that the community, while it has a difficult couple of chapters, that’s not the only story. I’m saddened to hear the evident frustration with some of the community members who recall the time before I can recall, since my involvement in Lakewood started 2007, six, five and officially in eight, but we’ve had a series of steps that today is the culmination of those series of steps. Housing protection, domestic partnership benefits, protection legislation. There have been administrative procedures taken by the Summers administration to recognize without legislation equality in city benefits. We had a former council president, Councilman Powers, who consistently from the dais made supportive remarks in favor of people’s freedom to love freely who they love. We have a new LGBTQ health-focused center at the new Cleveland Clinic Family Health Center that we soon will have in a few. That is a, frankly, a tip of the hat to Cleveland Clinic leadership, whose medical staff sees and anticipates the merits and the need for a focus in that area and thought that Lakewood would be a natural and appropriate home for such a clinic. And then, and finally, actually, my strongest compliments and I’d like to acknowledge Detective Director Patty Ryan of the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, once again, others have, but the community is not just government, of course, it’s neighbors, but it’s also the business world. And the business world does quite a lot to shape what kind of experience we have in the community. And so these issues of either discrimination or equality are a big moment and institutions can choose the fork in the road they choose. And the fact that our business leadership is looking at this not in a negative sense, but as an opportunity, is hugely important and hugely enlightening, not only of the compliance aspect, but with the impacts on employee personnel, customer base and talent clause. So that’s a big deal and I hope that we all celebrate that significant leadership by the Chamber and also our, the chambers of legal leadership that’s here too. I’m sorry now, I forget, I’ve forgotten your name, but my.
Marianne.
Thank you.
Thanks. I would just add that, speaking personally, as has been mentioned, I worked together with Councilwoman Marks to bring this ordinance forward last year and since, since that time, there have been a number of drafts, a number of iterations and a tremendous amount of hard work that has gone into making this ordinance what you see before you tonight. And I really would just want to echo my thanks to all of those individuals that have been mentioned so far, in particular, the council members who have worked on this, Councilwoman Marks, Councilman O’Malley in particular, as well as members of the administration, including the mayor, Law Director Butler, Directory of SEFI weighing in on human resource implications at various points, Elena Jokum from Equality Ohio, of course, and as can’t be understated, the huge and tremendous courage of all those who came forward tonight to testify and have shared their testimony with council in the past as well. We really tremendously appreciate it and I’m very grateful to everyone for their hard work to make this possible. Without any additional comment from Councilwoman Marks?
Thanks, Mr. President. I just also wanted to acknowledge Steve Bennett and Rob Rivera, he’s still here. I want to thank you both for bringing it to my attention, as well as to the attention of Sam O’Leary, that this was something that was greatly missing in the city of Lakewood that we all love so much. So thank you for having the courage to bring it forward to us. I appreciate it. Thanks for being here tonight as well.
Thank you. Without any further comment from council members, I would entertain a motion. Sorry, we had a motion from Councilman O’Malley to substitute. You’ve got a second? Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Adam Clark?
Anderson?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Litten?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Nowlin?
Yes.
O’Leary?
Yes.
O’Malley?
Yes. Thank you. That motion passes and Lakewood has passed ordinance one dash sixteen. Thank you.
Item twelve, communication from Council President O’Leary regarding Chamber of Commerce support of human rights legislation.
Thank you. I would just draw council’s attention to that communication that was read tonight by Patty Ryan from the Chamber and ask that you proceed and pass.
Sir?
Motion to be made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. And at this time, I would ask that without objection, we move item number eleven to number four.
Item eleven, communication from Dr. Judith Welsh to council. We got the Lakewood Emergency Department.
Thank you. Chief Gilman, would you be here to introduce Dr. Welsh?
Mr. Chair, members of council, I’d like to introduce Dr. Welsh. She is Director of the Emergency Room at Lakewood ER and she would put the council with an overview of the services provided in the emergency room. Thank you so much.
Members of council, thank you for inviting me here tonight. I very much appreciate the opportunity to speak on my very favorite subject, other than my six-year-old daughter, the emergency department of Cleveland Clinic Lakewood. I would like to use myself as well. I am a board-certified emergency physician. I’m originally from Buffalo, New York. I’m from Buffalo, New York originally. I did my undergraduate training at the Johns Hopkins University and then I subsequently completed medical school at SUNY Buffalo in my emergency medicine residency training also at SUNY Buffalo. We’ve been, my husband is also an emergency physician. He’s the medical director at Cleveland Clinic Lutheran and we’ve been in the Cleveland area for the last 10 years, providing emergency care. I most recently, up until six months ago, when I assumed the directorship, was the, was one of the staff physicians at Fairview’s emergency department treating both pediatric and adult patients. So I’d like to talk a little bit about the emergency department at Cleveland Clinic Lakewood. I understand that there are a lot of anxieties and concerns from the community about what are we capable of treating? And I’m here to reassure you that we are capable of treating any patient who comes to the emergency department with any emergency complaint. The only significant change is that the distance between the inpatient beds and the emergency department is measured in miles rather than feet. We are continuing to perform critical care and emergency department procedures. We are not just in urgent care treating sprains and strains, albeit more expensively than the urgent cares. Express cares are generally staffed by nurse practitioners who have a very brief list of conditions that they are allowed to treat. Urgent cares have a little bit more range in general, but they’re generally staffed by family practitioners who don’t have the same kind of training that we do as emergency physicians. We are capable of evaluating and stabilizing patients with heart attacks, with strokes, major trauma, bleeding in the brain, overdoses and severe mental health problems. And then we disposition them to center of excellence. And really, people ask, “Well, where would you transfer me?” And the question is, “Well, where would you like to go?” Because there are many different options and we are the humble servants of our patients. If you prefer to go to a non-Cleveland Clinic hospital, we will get you there if there are beds available at that facility. One of the questions that we have addressed in the forums is, “Well, what would happen if something happened to my child? If they had a major injury, a fracture and, you know, they fell out of a tree or if they were hit by a car?” And the answer is the same thing that happened before the hospital closed. We would stabilize and transfer that child to a trauma center, either to Metro or to Fairview. Would like to talk a little bit about our physician staff. They are outstanding. They are board-certified emergency physicians, all of whom are part of one Cleveland clinic. They’re the same doctors who work at Hillcrest, at Fairview, they work at Lutheran, at Euclid, at the main campus and also in the pediatric emergency departments. You get the same great care and experience at all the clinic EVs, including Cleveland Clinic Lakewood. Our group is composed of community physicians, academics, we have docs with teaching and research credentials. Many of us have professorship appointments at Case Cleveland Clinic Learner College of Medicine and also at Ohio University. And I myself am a clinical assistant professor of pediatric emergency medicine at Ohio University Heritage College of Medicine. We have physician assistants who assist us. They’re excellent. They’re supervised by us and they have ongoing continuing education at the main campus. In addition, we have outstanding nursing, paramedics, respiratory therapy, radiology, lab and support staff. Our freestanding model is unique and patient-centered. We minimize waiting time with a goal of maximizing patient satisfaction with rapid access. The way that we operate essentially is the patient is immediately greeted. As soon as you come in the emergency department, you are greeted by one of our registration folks who will take some brief information and will immediately escort you back to a patient care area where you’ll be greeted by your nurse, your care provider, either your physician assistant or your physician, and a paramedic who will all start working together to assist you with whatever condition you came in with. Our team works together to gather information and to develop and implement a treatment plan for the patient. And our lab in radiology turnaround times are very efficient and predictable, which is very different than some of the other facilities. In addition, we have an expanded respiratory therapist role. They perform respiratory and critical care, but they also take care of stat labs for us and they’re a patient advocate. They provide communication and comfort. And we have backup quickly available from Cleveland Clinic, main and regional hospitals. And so we’ve been very successful in the last few months. We have noticed that our patient satisfaction scores have skyrocketed. They’re all above the 90th percentile in national key domains, including overall care, doctor communication, nursing courtesy, willingness to recommend and control of being. So our patients are telling us they really like the care that they get. In addition, our volume is made greater than 10% above the initially projected numbers and are anticipated to rise. and are anticipated to rise. Our door-to-doct times are well below national and clinic standards. The national benchmark is 30 minutes. The clinic says, "You guys have to be better than 90th percentile in everything you do." Our goal for you is 12 minutes. And so our emergency department is even below that very lofty goal on a consistent basis. So in short, Cleveland Clinic Lakewood Emergency Department is effectively caring for the citizens of Lakewood and is something to be very proud of. We are providing Cleveland Clinic quality close to home. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I understand that unfortunately, you're not able to join us tonight for a Q and A. However, Chief Gilman is available to help address concerns as well, so we do appreciate that very much. I also want to express my appreciation for your willingness, along with Chief Gilman, to really go out into the community and help community members understand the services that are available to them. It's incredibly important, I think, not only from a public safety standpoint, but also from the standpoint of helping them understand, as you mentioned, the services that are right close to home.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for that.
My pleasure. Are there any questions from council that I can try and clarify?
Yes, I believe Councilman O'Malley. Thank you.
And thank you for your patience and your indulgence tonight. I'm sorry, I also meant to attend the forum that you had at Feeder Manor. I understand that that was very informative, and I want to echo what Council President O'Leary said. I appreciate there being sort of roving forums throughout the community. You mentioned that your patients tell you and mentioned some experiences they've had. How are you measuring that? Is it just that old?
That all goes through the Cleveland Clinic, actually. They utilize a national service called Press Gaming. This is, I think, about 50% of the healthcare facilities, about 10,000 different facilities utilize this service, and it's considered a gold standard in measuring patient satisfaction. When patients are seen, they are given at random. They're sent to, I think, about 20% of the people who do not provide an email. We'll get a survey in the mail, and then 100% of patients who provide an email to the Cleveland Clinic upon their registration will receive an emailed survey. And there are a lengthy number of questions. The most important domains, really, that we care about are communication from the physician, courtesy of nursing, overall willingness to recommend. Those are the kind of the high points, although they do ask and think somewhere around 20 different questions. And then we are ranked with the responses on a Likert scale, so on a five-point scale, from very good to poor, essentially. And then they only really want to look at the top number, that five, that very good number, is the most important number. Anything less than very good is considered terrible in our book, essentially, because our goal is to make everybody as happy as possible. And so at Cleveland Clinic Lakewood, we score above the 90th percentile in all those major domains, the things that matter most to us as providers.
Okay. And how many doctors do you have, I'm sorry if you mention this, at any given time at the emergency room?
We actually have a very large group of physicians. We have a core group of full-time physicians, and then we augment our schedule with physicians from the main campus. We have also integrated our group with Lutheran, because we try to kind of cover, we try to cover both sites with the same physicians, just because we have people who get vacations. Because we are sort of a small core group of about six docs, if somebody gets sick or has a need for vacation, it's very challenging to cover that with just a small group of people. And so with an expanded group of people, we always can ensure that we have appropriate coverage, and we never have a break in coverage in the emergency department.
So what's like the minimum number of doctors that can, or is there such a floor?
I don't think we have a, I mean, we don't really have.
You have that core group of, say, six doctors.
Six doctors.
Did that change when it went from being a hospital to a standalone emergency department?
No, it did not. The same physicians were present from day one.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Boyer.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, doctor. One question, just conceptually, to help those of us who are lay persons, lay peoples. When we think of emergency care, shall we think of the emergency room as stabilizing and/or providing emergency aid to most patients? And typically, that work is a whole variety of things, but not rolling somebody directly into surgery. Of course, we couldn't do surgery any longer at Lakewood, in Lakewood Emergency Room, but typically those cases with serious trauma from perhaps a car accident or some act of violence in recent years, due to the inner health system protocols, have been redirected to Metro Downtown anyway. Correct?
That is correct.
So what I'm trying to get at is gaps in coverage. Are there any from before to after the change?
There are no gaps in coverage of any kind. We staff place 24/7 with board-certified emergency physicians. There will always be a doctor there, no matter what. And actually, you're kind of discussing, you know, trauma. We did have a gentleman who was at a local bar, who got into an altercation with another gentleman, and the gentleman who was in question, our patient, was actually from out of town. So they didn't know where Metro was. And during the course of this altercation, a gun came out, and this young man was shot. He was shot just around the femoral artery in the thigh. This occurred maybe a couple weeks after the hospital closed. And at that point, we were no longer a hospital. We just were providing, you know, emergency department care. His friends drove him to the front door of the emergency department and immediately kicked him out of the car. Our security guard and our paramedic scooped him up into a wheelchair, then brought him back to our resuscitation bay, and this poor young man was inches away from death. Had they driven around the corner a couple of times, he would have gone to the coroner rather than to the trauma bay. Our emergency department physician and physician assistant, our nurses, our paramedics, all worked together to adequately resuscitate this young man. They got him dispositioned over to Metro via Lifelight ground crew. Within moments of his arrival, they had blood hanging, they had two IVs, they had IV fluids. They did all the things that a trauma team would do in a trauma center. And then they got him where he needed to go. He immediately went to the operating room at Metro, where he was taken care of definitively and was able to survive that potentially lethal injury.
And a quick follow-on is, what should patients do? Typically, should you drive yourself to the emergency room or call 911? It sounds like those very responsible friends didn't call 911.
No. And his friends would have definitely done him a much greater service, having called 911. And I would recommend that to any person who thinks they're having an acute life-threatening emergency. If you're having severe chest pain, if you can't move an arm or move a leg, calling 911 is going to be your best bet, because we have outstanding paramedics in the city of Lakewood. They know what they're doing. They will quickly assess patients, they'll determine the best course of action, and get that patient to the most appropriate, closest facility.
Thank you so much. Councilman Marks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Welsh, for taking the time out of your busy schedule to come and explain some things to us. If you could clarify, I know that there's been questions in the past about the difference between an urgent care and an emergency department. Could you clarify the difference?
Absolutely. I'd be glad to. So urgent cares are very, very good for unscheduled minor emergencies, minor trauma, colds, that sort of diagnosis. They're generally staffed by family practitioners or internists, who have very different type of medical training than I do as an emergency physician. They have limited resources. Oftentimes, they can do very basic lab work in their offices. Sometimes they can do some x-rays, but oftentimes, they can't get stat readings on those x-rays from a board-certified radiologist. In our emergency department, we have emergency physicians. Our training is really to consider the worst-case scenarios. What do you have going on with you that could threaten your life, require hospitalization, or require emergency surgery? That's sort of what I think about every time I meet a patient, regardless of what their chief complaint is. We worry about the worst-case scenario. We have access to Cleveland Clinic radiology, CAT scan, x-rays, MRI. We're able to get stat tests back on patients, and we can do a lot more in terms of lab testing. We also have different procedural skills. In an urgent care, you can't have a spinal tap performed, you can't have a central line placed, you can't be intubated, or have your airway controlled on a critical sort of basis. We have very different training and experience, and we do very different things, and we are not in urgent care. We can provide unscheduled minor injury, minor illness care, but that's not what we do on a day-to-day basis.
And if I could clarify also, in an emergency room service, as you have, if there's a need, you have contact with the hospital to make sure, if you have to transport a patient, that that patient gets transported to the appropriate facility? And as I understand also, that when transferred to a hospital, those patients get priority beds even before somebody who is in that emergency room of that transferring hospital. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. So to clarify, we have a transfer center that's available at the Cleveland Clinic that's staffed by experts in getting us connections with physicians, with obtaining beds administratively and setting up transport. Depending on the acuity and severity of the condition, brain bleeds, strokes, heart attacks, all go through a very special process called the critical medical workflow. And so there's a separate phone number we dial, basically hit a button on the phone that says acute, and somebody picks up the phone and says, "Where do you need your ambulance?" Immediately, they'll start their ground crew, their critical care ground crew, out for Lakewood. And they're generally based over at the main campus. It takes them 17 minutes, door-to-door, to stage a critical care ground crew on my site. It's almost instantaneous. We don't even have the paperwork ready most of the time by the time the critical care ground crew gets there to help us. So the very sickest of the sick go out that kind of route. Then we have a routine line. When we think that somebody requires hospitalization, but they're not critically ill, they don't need emergency surgery, let's say somebody who's stable with chest pain, their workup is unremarkable, their EKG is okay, the blood work looks okay, we'll put an order in the computer called a heads-up when we need them, and we anticipate an admissions necessary, that earmarks a bed at their chosen location. So we'll identify a couple, top two, you know, top one, top two sort of locations that we think that patient should go. When we're ready to admit them, we put in order to admit, and then they'll call us back within a few minutes, and they'll say, "All right, doc, we've got you a bed at Fairview." And, you know, we've got the doctor on the line. You tell your story, just like you would over at Fairview, same docs, have a conversation, and then the ambulance comes, picks the patient up, delivers them directly to their inpatient bed. It's very seamless. And absolutely, our patients get first dibs on the inpatient beds. They realize we have limited resources in the freestanding in terms of ability to continue care. We don't have critical care doctors that we can say, "Hey, come on down and see this patient." We need to get them out as quickly as possible. And so the facility's managers will give us priority for those inpatient beds.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. So for those of us in healthcare, we know, if there's an emergency, call 911. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks again for all your comments and educating council this evening as to the current state of the emergency department here in Lakewood and all of its capabilities.
It's my privilege. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Oh, yes, I should also point out, we do have an informational flyer containing a lot of the information that's been conveyed tonight by Dr. Welsh, including the various services that are available, as well as various symptomologies that are appropriate for the emergency department here in Lakewood. So thanks again to Dr. Welsh for her presentation. We have speakers signed up on this agenda item, the first of which is Dr. Kilroy.
Hi. I'm Dr. Terry Kilroy, 1-543-1220, Drive, 14701, Detroit. I'm kind of up here, it's unfortunate Dr. Welsh left, because I basically had a number of questions about how this is going to work. This is the only opportunity I would have asked, had to ask her how they're actually going to perform their job, but since she's not here, I again have no input as to how the ER is going to run. You know, I've never had to deal with a freestyle in the emergency room on a day-to-day basis, as I do now and as my patients currently do. I read Dr. Welsh's article in the Lakewood Observer, where she presented two cases that frankly shouldn't have been in the ER anyway. They're both urgent care cases, or they should have just called the regular physician and been seen there. So, you know, those cases were not very illustrative of what happens in emergency rooms for patients that are appropriate for that, if they're really sick. I'm a pulmonary intensivist. I kind of work at the pointy end of the spear, so all my patients are relatively sick. So I have to admit, my perspective is their perspective of the truly sick patients. I knew how the old ER worked, because as the director of the ICU, I sat on the Medical and Surgical Practice Committee, and I sat on the Emergency Room Practice Committee, which all included a member of the boards, that the community could actually see what we were doing as physicians inside our hospitals, it was done in a transparent manner. I don't have that right now. The reason I'm sitting up here is an experience with one of my patients last week. LD is a middle-aged white female who has asthma and bronchiectasis, and is what we call a frequent flyer, because she gets sick a lot. She also unfortunately joined the US Army to be all she could be, and she came out a heroin addict. So about a week ago, she was picked up unconscious with a presumed heroin overdose. I can't tell what happened on the scene, because the Lakewood EMS run sheet, which used to be available in the Lakewood chart, is not available to me in the Epic system. But according to the history done at Lakewood's ER, the EMS appropriately picked the patient up, they assumed she was a drug overdose, did give her some Narcan in an attempt to resuscitate her, and then for reasons that are unclear to me, she was brought to Lakewood's ER. I'm not clear who made the decision. I understand from Chief Gilman that usually they contact the local physician as far as where the triadification. The reason I'm questioning why they would go to Lakewood's ER is, an unconscious drug overdose patient is an automatic ICU admit, so why did they waste time going to the ER at Lakewood when they knew they were going to have to admit the patient to some hospital and to the intensive care unit? But when the patient did arrive in the emergency room at Lakewood Hospital, no one bothered to call me, despite the fact that my name is all over the Epic chart, and being someone who admitted her multiple times, and then consulted on her multiple times, because I know her better than anybody else after 10 years. She then spent an hour or two in the ER at Lakewood. Martin's ambulance, I can pick up the record there, picked her up, and 26 minutes later, she arrived at Fairview Hospital, where again, I was not called. She was admitted to the ICU overnight. Luckily for both her and me, the following morning, one of my colleagues, who's a pulmonary intensivist, actually did look at the Epic chart, saw that it was one of my regular patients, and called me up and said the patient was there. If he had not done that, the question that comes to my mind was, A, what would have happened to her? Where would she have gone for follow-ups since I was out of the loop? And so, you know, my basic concerns are multiple, okay? One, how does EMS decide where to take the patient, or are they using their own protocols? Are they in fact sending, you know, consulting with the physician in the emergency room at Lakewood? Number two, how do we keep the community physicians involved? I mean, when I started, there were six pulmonary doctors at Lakewood. I am actually the last pulmonary doctor in Lakewood. As you notice by the color of my hair, I'm not one for this job. And so even though a few of us are still left, we still do like to take care of our patients. So how does the emergency room keep us in the loop? Number next, when they're in the emergency room, how do we keep track of what they're actually doing there? Dr. Welsh said they have six core people basically covering Lakewood and Lutheran, while 24/7 physician coverage for one physician is four slots. So they have six slots to cover eight slots, which is what Lutheran would take and what Lakewood would take for continuous thing. Normally, they have one physician and a couple of PAs there, okay? That's not exactly a good scenario if you bring in a sick patient, because the doctor will tie down with that patient, and nobody else is getting taken care of. So it's vital that severely ill patients actually do go to the place where they're going to get their definitive care. I would kind of like to know how I'm going to be kept in the loop in this. I mean, when Dr. Welsh talks about the transfer center, that is a closed network of the Cleveland Clinic. They couldn't tell you.
I'm sorry, ask the chairman.
I'm sorry. So the big question I have is, is where is the public input to this, and where is the transparency? Since the clinic will-
A question, a specific question was raised as to EMS protocols. Would you be able to provide as to what protocols are being followed, dictating where patients...
Can I take the question from you that was out of the room like I said?
Sure.
Okay. You know, when you pick up a sick patient, I mean, your guys are there to tell a sick one from that sick one. You pick up a sick patient, when you decide where you're going to take them, whether you're going to take them directly to the Lakewood ER or to another hospital, you guys do either do that with a list protocol or you call the ER doctor and he decides where to go?
There are online protocols and then there are protocols where we talk directly to the hospital. So we have our written protocols that we file that outline what we do. And if we have questions, then we would communicate to the ER where we would be transporting or to whatever ER we can get to, to get additional medical direction if we needed it. When we transport to the hospital, we talk to the hospital that we are transporting to. So when it comes to it, it's patient's choice first. There may be some patients that are so severe that we get them, take them to Lakewood to get them stabilized, which has happened, and that because we don't think that they're going to make it to another hospital. So we take them there, they've been stabilized, and then they're tranced out using the critical care transport system that Dr. Welsh mentioned.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Our next speaker signed up is Brian Essie.
Mr. Chair. Yes, just a brief additional point on Dr. Kilroy's comments. I think the, there will be public input upon the opening of the Family Health Center, which of course is not right at this moment, but there are provisions for the medical director of that Family Health Center to get input from the community once that's functioning. Whether the emergency room is going to be a separate administrative entity, I don't know. I think it's a fair question for us to ask, but presumably there are protocols because these Lakewood's standalone ERs hardly the first in the region or the state. And so I'm sure these very valid and important physician coordination questions have been dealt with previously. So I think that there's got, I'm sure there's an answer out there, but that's really physicians talking to other physicians according to established clinical protocols.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Essie.
Thank you, Brian Essie, 1-5306, Edgewater Drive. Congratulations on the new legislation. I really appreciate Mr. O'Malley or Councilman O'Malley's comment about in the past council being out of step with the rest of Lakewood. I work in healthcare, but I won't pretend to understand what Dr. Kilroy and Dr. Welsh go through or what Chief Gilman goes through on a daily basis. But I do want to note that we have a private entity here speaking, albeit about something that's very important to our community, Emergency Health Services. And, you know, as Dr. Kilroy, I think I just heard him say, we have no control over that entity. There's no standard. The agreement that has been signed talks about emergency services being performed at the Duke Family Health Center for as long as the Cleveland Clinic owns and operates the Family Health Center. It does not say that we'll be an emergency department. I think we had a conversation with Councilman Bullock about the wording of that and we had McDonald Hawkins and Thompson Heine and Jones Day or whoever the clinic used to toil over that language, but the language still that came out was no emergency departments guaranteed, only emergency services. And those services are going to be affected by the Cleveland Clinic's Community Health Needs Assessment conducted over at Fairview and then sort of some modified version of Lakewood's data. Again, the people in control of the data can control the outcome, and that's a private entity that the city has no control over. So I think it's a little unfair and unusual that a private physician who I think is very sincere and cares about community healthcare and the needs of patients in the emergency setting gets five minutes and cut off. He got a couple of questions in, where a private entity has, by my count, over 15 minutes. Thank you.
Thanks. Just remind everyone that we have a adopted item. And so the presentation was a adopted item and that's distinguishable from our public comment portion, but I appreciate that. Our next speaker is Ed Graham.
Just a couple of quick points. The comments by Dr. Welsh said that there was no gaps in coverage. I think what she meant was that, that there was always somebody on duty in the emergency room. However, I think what the ordinary person would think of as a gap in coverage, she did say 17 minutes door-to-door for those people that they couldn't serve. 17 minutes is quite a gap if somebody is in dire need of significant healthcare coverage by a physician. So I would say gaps in coverage of 17 minutes because you don't provide the care that you expect to get when you go to the emergency room. One other comment she made, that they do their best to make everybody as happy as possible. The fellow parishioner recently had to go to the emergency room and was taken to Lakewood Hospital and wasn't able to get the care they needed, so they were transported to another hospital. Cost $700. They didn't get, in other words, when the doctor says they get care, most people I think expect when you get care is you are taken care of so you don't have to go to another hospital. And so $700 is a lot of money for a person to have to pay who is on a fixed income. So I would say this is another clear-cut reason why this whole concept that the city has undertaken to shut down the hospital where you could be given all the emergency care you need doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, the patients, once they are brought to Lakewood ER, are getting care. The 17 minutes is the time it takes for the transport unit to get from Cleveland Clinic downtown to Lakewood. The entire time that they are in the ER, they're being cared for by the emergency room staff. They're being stabilized, they're being put on whatever medications they need to be put on. And the only difference is, as Dr. Welsh said, rather than wheeling hundreds of feet down to a patient room, they are transferred to a inpatient, a facility with inpatient beds. As for the bills, we have not heard of a case where there has been a patient who was on Medicare or Medicaid on a fixed income that did not have their bill covered for the transport from the ER. That has been monitored. The billing is based on the medical necessity, the medical necessity, and they work with the staff, both Lakewood Fire Department, to make sure that we document the medical necessity. That's what gets the bills covered. So the medical necessity of taking the patient to a patient, a facility with inpatient bed is what determines the payment. If there's a problem with the payment, there are policies in place that that can be addressed if it's brought to our attention.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Our next speaker is Judy Gillespie.
Hi, my name is Judy Gillespie. I live at 23003 James Lane. And you guys know that I've always come up here with a word, a definition, and my word for the day is shell game, S-H-E-L-L game. The definition is, it's a noun, and it states, "A game involving sleight of hand in which three inverted cups or nutshells are moved about and contestants must spot which one is the one with the ball or the object underneath." A second definition is "a deceptive and evasive action or ploy, especially a political one." That was from the general Google search and then from Merriam-Webster. It says, "The definition, a dishonest betting game in which someone hides a ball under one of the three cups or shells, moves the cups or shells around quickly and asks an observer to guess which one the ball is under." I believe Cleveland Clinic's support of both Dr. Judith Welsh and her partnership with the City of Lakewood's fire chief, Scott Gilman, are reflecting that they are all doing a fabulous job at the shell game that they are currently conducting under the title of "Just the Facts." I also believe that this was your answer to St. Lakewood Hospital's request to correctly educate the residents about the limitations of the ED services. You, the city council, and you, Mayor Summers, are partners in the shell game to misinform interested people in the city of Lakewood. I find it very interesting, the first organized "Just the Facts" effort was done at the Westerly, then at Kathleen Lothar Center West, and then Vitor Manor, just currently completed last Wednesday when I was there on 6:15. You should have seen Scott Gilman's eyes when I walked into the room. Can anyone else identify these audiences as captive participants rather than random public attended invitees? One of the most, whoops, one of the next scheduled "Just the Facts" that I'm personally aware of will be held at the Witten Place on Monday, June 27. However, you must sign up prior to that, to this presentation that will not be open to the public. Dr. Welsh is going to speak there, but it's not open to the public. I was informed when I spoke to Witten Place employee that the only Witten Place and Carlyle residents can sign up to attend. That has me questioning whether there's a lot of blue shirts involved in this one. See, I did view the UT2 video posted of the Westerly, the "Just the Facts" presentation, which left out many good points of interest as well as being very one-sided. Cleveland Clinic sided, like tonight. Confusing, vague, and misleading is not what people need to listen to. As a St. Lakewood Hospital member, I am acutely aware that most of the emergency department services are offered at most urgent care centers, but as far, but at far lower prices with no ambulance or transport being required or needed. I'm not even sure that any ambulances have ever taken a person for drop-off at an urgent care center. I don't question the ED's qualified ability to diagnose the difference between an urgent need and an emergency need. The real question at hand, is that really necessary for the Cleveland Clinic Lakewood location to develop a new two-step medical process to just benefit them financially? Seeking medical care in our past was always a one-stop shop in Lakewood for the majority of admissions. I don't believe Lakewood residents should be played as a shell game or should have to pay for one admission to an ED for the diagnosis and all the included costs that are brought about that than just to have them told that they have to be transferred to a hospital for a second admission for the actual treatment, now with the added expenses of possibly $800 or $900 in ambulance cost just because Cleveland Clinic Lakewood no longer can deliver definitive invasive treatments. This becomes a major delay in the whole life-saving process for any patient seeking help. Please, watch who you choose to ask for help from. It might just cost you your life if it turns out to be the wrong choice. At the point of transfer to a full-service hospital, your insurance will then have to pay for this admission and new workup because you will then be at a different location and those medical people need to dial into what's wrong with you. They cannot or will not rely completely on what Lakewood ED already did. And if CC Lakewood sends you one of their, to their, one of their Cleveland Clinic-owned and operated full hospitals, you are then paying Cleveland Clinic twice for the same medical help. That's a shell game.
Miss Gillespie, I believe it there for tonight. Thanks. I appreciate the time.
There is no shell game. These talks under the orders have been requested by the areas of the places where we are doing the talks. So the Witten Place is the one who brought up the request for the talk. When it comes to the workup, if a patient is transported to Fairview, they are given an emergency room workup and they would get a bill for that. If the patient is transported to Lakewood, they are given an emergency workup, they would get a bill for that. If they need inpatient services, they are transported from the emergency room at Lakewood to an inpatient bed at a hospital with inpatient beds. If they get an emergency workup at Fairview, they are transported to an inpatient bed at Fairview or to the hospital of their choice if they're part of another system. When it comes to transportation to urgent cares or things of that nature, that is not prohibited by our protocol. That is prohibited by our protocols because urgent cares cannot provide the services that are provided in a freestanding ER. And it's important to remember that since the freestanding ER at Lakewood opened, Metro Health has opened two more freestanding ERs in Kailan County, which moves to their model of putting the emphasis on outpatient care rather than inpatient care.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification in those points.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Bullock.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if you could remind us that on page one of the council docket, it establishes rule, it reminds all of us the rules for public to address council, which includes that speakers must be courteous in their language and avoid personalities. And maybe such a reminder could help us avoid being personal in our comments.
Absolutely. Our next speaker is Pam Whitul.
Here I am again. Pam Whitul, 111813, Clifton Boulevard. Nice to see you guys. Okay, first of all, where is the Cleveland Clinic downtown? Yeah, I'm trying to figure it out. Anybody want to tell me that? I don't see a Cleveland, East 9th, West 6th, there is no Cleveland Clinic downtown. Recently heard of somebody going from ER in Lakewood to Fairview, 26 minutes. I find it unbelievable that you can get to East 9th, to the Cleveland Clinic on the east side in 17 on a regular basis. I understand to get really upset every time Norman is mentioned, and I just want to bring him up today because the man died. Witten Place, I have a friend there who offered me, I will be there on the 27th if I'm allowed to go. I did not, was not aware that that had changed. I was to be a guest of the resident of the Witten Place. Has that changed? If that is, that does speak to the fact that you are closing those meetings to the general population, and I was disappointed that the doctor was not here to answer questions. And I was hoping to be there and ask questions of both Mr. Gilman and the good doctor. My contention is the same as it always has been, the master agreement, and this council said we would have the same emergency care that we had before they closed the hospital. On December 21st, we would have the same emergency care post-December 21st, 2015. Labs are not done at Lakewood, they're sent out. There's equipment that is not there, that is no longer there. Where do you, how do you, if you have a brain bleeding and you're in the middle of a heart attack, how do you decide where you want to go? That's just a little throw-out. You know, I'm just, you know, I mean, I'm just, and if you think you're in a stroke, who would take the chance of, who knows that they're a Tello, whatever, what is it called? Tello-something stroke? If you think you might be having a stroke, tele-stroke capabilities, no individual person's going to know if they have a stroke with tele-capable, tele-stroke capabilities. So they don't belong at Lakewood's ER because it is not the same ER as it was before 12/21/2015. I'm going to read a testimonial on Facebook from a man named Alex. I'm going to read part of his testimony. "My experience," he says today, "with a personal emergency. I had a medical emergency of a serious nature and went to the Lakewood emergency room. When neither the nurse nor doctor could do the required procedure, I told them about the special machine used by my doctor back in New York City. Their reply was priceless. We had that machine when this was a hospital." That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When it comes to the patient that he referred to, there is no one out in the audience that has the complete facts as to what happened to that patient. The truth of it is, he was transported to... The truth of it is, he was transported to a Lakewood ER because he needed to be at an ER facility quickly. He was successfully stabilized by the Lakewood ER and then transferred at his doctor's request to an inpatient at the ICU at St. John's.
He did not go to St. John's, sir.
Excuse me. I'm, I'm sure for a fact that he did go to St. John's because I talked to the doctors at St. John's. You do not have your facts correct, Ms. Whitaker.
He's still dead, chief.
And you don't understand or you don't have the facts in that case. You have not seen the things that I've seen and I cannot share those with you because of federal laws.
Thank you. I appreciate those statements. I also want to just again remind our audience of speaker courtesy at all times, please. And I would also like to note with respect to speaking that's going on at privately-owned facilities, we have to keep in mind, these are people's homes. These Gold Coast buildings are their homes, the common areas are their common areas. And it's certainly, I think, laudable that the Cleveland Clinic, as well as Lakewood's emergency services, are providing that kind of outreach to interested groups and communities throughout our city. However, I would not hold out the expectation that simply because a group or a community has that interest that they open up their home to anyone and everyone from the city for that meeting. I think that that's important that we understand that. There are many appropriate and public venues that we do have these discussions, this, for example, being one of them. And there are also times where we have the opportunity to have discussions that are held in private, and that's okay too. We do have a final speaker on this agenda item. Was there additional comment? Okay, we have an additional speaker then, Brooke Willis. I see, that speaker is no longer here. In that case, we...
I thought I signed up for Steve. I did too. There's two different sheets, the sheet you use on.
I have here two sign-ins for the docket agenda items. Those are all the speakers that I have reflected on, those sheets.
They're both sheets. I don't have much. Can I talk? I don't have much to say.
I'm sorry.
I don't define it wrong, sheets.
Ma'am, just please, hold on just a moment, we're getting something sort of that. We have a number of people signed up for the public comment section of the meeting. Perhaps that's the sheet that you signed up for, in which case I would ask that you hold your comment until the public comment section of the meeting. I believe we have a, I would actually move that we receive and file the communication from Dr. Welsh that we referred tonight. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, that motion passes. That brings us to formally item three, now item five.
Item five, Finance Committee report regarding ordinance is 29-16, resolutions 88-71-16, 72-16, 73-16, 74 and 75-16.
Councilman Bullock.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Gee, I thought everybody was here to hear this report. I'm surprised that the audience did not. I'll read kind of lightly from this long report. I want to acknowledge the very high-quality work of our legislative liaison and counsel clerk in preparing this. Thank you all. In sum, the Finance Committee met and considered and reported out five separate items of legislation, recommended adoption of all of them, although, you know, in one case, in anticipation of additional deliberation on the fourth night, 88-72-16. But I'll go ahead and very quickly formally read through the letter. Dear members of council, your Finance Committee met on June 13. All members were present, as well as all members of the council. We considered ordinance 29-16, authorizing the transfer in advance of certain funds. We recommended that ordinance for adoption on spur of reading unanimously. Next was 88-72-16, three-year agreement with AT&amp;T Corporation for sale and purchase of citywide Centrix telephone services. We recommended adoption of that as well, pending further clarification due to questions about what's being sold and also the nature of this particular ordinance being a no-bid ordinance. Third, 88-73-16, approving the tax budget in the city of Lakewood, Ohio for the year 2017 and authorizing the filing of the same with the county fiscal officer. This is annual legislation that begins our fiscal year. We unanimously recommended adoption of the resolution. 88-74-16 was next, and was also recommended unanimously for adoption. That's also one of the legislative instruments that begin our fiscal year and enables the city to successfully function in our tax collection services with the county. Finally, 88-75-16, ordinance to accept the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county fiscal officer. This would establish, reaffirm at the current tax rates, the same rates that they've been for many, many years, our incomes, basically, excuse me, not our income tax, but property tax collections for the city portion of those taxes. Finance Committee going unanimously recommend adoption of that as well. Finally, we began a multi-leading discussion of council's deliberations in establishing budget priorities of our own and reflecting those in varying degrees in our forthcoming 2017 budget. We're at the early stages, but we're having that discussion so that we may give ourselves ample time to do a good job. I move to receive and file the, this committee report.
As it appears on the docket. Second, any further discussion on that motion to receive and file that report? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, that motion passes. Without objection, we have a resolution on our docket this evening. It is item number 14, and I would ask that without objection, we move that item up to number five. Yes, I would begin by reading a letter of introduction for this particular resolution. Bear with me just a moment. Dear members of council, attached to the resolution officially recognizing Lakewood Reads as a community event and encouraging all Lakewood residents to participate this summer. Lakewood High School and Lakewood Public Library team up each year to create the Lakewood Reads program to engage our entire community in celebrating literacy by reading a book together. This year, Lakewood High School's 2016 Summer Reading Selection is a 2006 nonfiction book titled Field Notes from a Catastrophe: Man, Nature, and Climate Change by Elizabeth Pulver, attempts to bring attention to the causes and effects of global climate change. Please join me in passing this resolution tonight and in helping celebrate literacy in Lakewood. We're also joined by Mr. Peter Peddow, I believe, to receive the resolution and make a few remarks. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thanks a lot. I just wanted to say that Lakewood High School and the library really appreciates the support of city council. We hope through reading books like this to engage the kind of discourse that I got to see a lot of this evening as I was here. So, we challenge our students and the community to think hard about serious issues, and this book is something that does that. We also encourage people to read things just for fun as well, but in this case, we chose something that is of, I guess I would say, more important subject. So, thank you very much, and I have a copy of the book for each member of council and the mayor, so.
Oh, thank you, Bullock. We appreciate that very much, and I know that I intended to pick it up anyway, but this will be even more certain, so.
Great, and other people, you know, I'll tell you, they're available at the library, they're available at other libraries, and they're available at the Lakewood High School bookstore, or bookroom as well, which is open every day.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate that. I would ask that council receive and file the communications. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, that motion passes, and I would move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to adopt? I would just again say that I'm incredibly pleased that we're able to participate and help draw attention to this fantastic program as well, and I look forward to some good reading.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, Councilman Anderson.
I know in years past, thank you for the copy of the book, I know in years past, when we've been provided with a copy of the Community Reading Project, if you will, once, at least I was done with the book, I actually took it to the library and allowed them to use part of their circulation, part of their set of books for all the community members. So, I'd encourage members of the administration, the community, or the city council to do the same. So, let's read it, get it over to the library so other people can enjoy this. So, thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Yeah, if you would, please step forward and you can receive the resolution, we'll take a quick photo.
Great.
I'm sorry, yes, we do have a motion to adopt, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Yes, you bet.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's okay. Yes, period, Case of the Dog in Lakewood, the other West End, and Outlier.
We don't want to see my bill. Are you just laughing anymore?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's the pop quiz.
Do we have to turn it over for sport?
You have. That brings us to, I believe, now item number seven, which is ordinance 29-16.
Ordinance 29-16 and ordinance authorizing the transfer in advance of certain funds.
We received the report on this, as was noted, this was recommended for adoption on their reading, which is tonight. In light of that, I move to adopt. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to adopt? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, that motion passes.
Resolution 88-72-16, a resolution to enter into a three-year agreement with AT&amp;T for the sale and purchase of citywide Centrix telephone service, authorizing the expenditure of funds in an amount not to exceed $60,000 in order to effectuate the intent of the agreement and exempting the contract from competitive bidding pursuant to LCO Section 111048N referred to Finance Committee 6616.
Thank you. This was also noted in the report, and I believe there were some outstanding questions from council to be answered on this. Mr. Finance Chair, would you prefer to pose those questions this evening or defer?
To be happy to pose the questions, definitely recall that the committee discussion brought to light, and thank you, Mr. President, remember from the administration, whether the finance or the law or otherwise, questions we had were relating to what's being sold or not, and also, can we underscore the reasons that this would recommend a no-bid contract?
And we would certainly appreciate it if you're able to address those things tonight, if your preference is to take these questions under advisement and get a response back that's agreeable to.
Those two I can certainly answer, right?
Thanks very much.
The agreement is for the sale by AT&amp;T and the purchase by the city of the Centrix service. So, we certainly didn't mean to cause any confusion in the title of the resolution by suggesting that the city was selling anything. It's not. The agreement calls for the sale and purchase of that product, the sale by AT&amp;T and the purchase by the city of that product. I hope that clarifies that question. The second question you've got is why the no-bid contract. The reason is because AT&amp;T is the sole exclusive provider of the Centrix service that has been serving our city for a great many years. The copper wires, they're dwindling in number because we have most of our telephony over voice-over IP, but we still have some old fax machines that still use that service, and the only provider of Centrix service is AT&amp;T. So, very similar to other utility contracts, you don't, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of, not a vast marketplace out there, so we've got this whole source contract here, which requires you to waive the competitive bidding requirements. Thanks. Thank you. Follow on, Mr. Chair, sure, Mr. President, the Centrix telephone service is what exactly? It's the wires and the service that we're purchasing is not the ownership, but rather the use for, the annual use for three years covered by this proposed contract of the ability to get information over those wires. That's it.
Yeah, it's a dial-tone service over a copper line. You might ask the question, who uses copper lines for fax today? I've asked that question, the answer is the courts. And I think public safety police still use fax over a copper line. I don't think many others do, except, but as long as primary communication for public safety in courts comes over that primary service, we've got a negative handle to us.
Okay, thanks. So, essentially, your council colleagues, our questions were simply clarifying the terminology and making sure that we understood what was being referred to, and so I'd be happy to make a motion that we adopt this resolution tonight.
Thank you. I would second that motion. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 88-72-16. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, that motion passes.
Item, or Resolution 88-73-16, a resolution approving the tax budget of the city of Lakewood for the year 2017 and authorizing the filing of same with the county fiscal officer.
Thank you. Council members would note that I think I have this marked as a deferral on the basis that I initially spotted as a resolution and it's only at second read tonight. However, I think that we did receive a favorable report out on this item, and accordingly, I would ask that we consider adoption of Resolution 88-73-16, and I would so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion on the motion to adopt Resolution 88-73-16? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, that motion passes.
Resolution 88-74-16, a resolution requesting the county fiscal officer to draw the county treasurer to pay the city in advance of all real personal property and estate taxes and special assessments collected in the year 2017 in such amounts as may be requested and available.
My previous comment goes for this as well, and I would likewise move that we adopt Resolution 88-74-16 this evening.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to adopt 88-74-16? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, that motion passes.
Resolution 88-75-16, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the fiscal officer.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to adopt 88-75-16? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed, that motion passes. All those opposed, that motion passes.
Ordinance 30-16, an ordinance to market for sale of real property located at 1458, 1462, 1466, 1472, 1476, Bell Avenue, 1451, 1457, 1461, 1471, and 1477, St. Charles Avenue pursuant to Section 15507 of the Codified Ordances. Please don't first read and refer to the Committee of the Whole, 51616, second reading and recommended for adoption, 6616.
Thank you. As was noted, with this ordinance, we do have a favorable recommendation for adoption. And I know that a number of council members requested some additional information from the planning department in the course of those discussions, including, I believe, specific appraisals for those properties and a couple other questions as well. We are in receipt of that information from the planning department. I would, however, open up the floor to council members at this time to voice any additional concerns or considerations to the planning department regarding ordinance number 30-16. Hearing of Councilman Bullock.
Mr. Chair, I'm happy to support the ordinance tonight. My request to the administration, though, is that per Section 1, several steps are outlined to Director of Planning and Development. Actually, Mr. Chair, if I'm, Mr. President, if I'm recalling, we had contemplated editing the language to read the mayor for the director of public safety, given the fact that we currently have a vacant position for Director of Planning and Development. But at any rate, to solicit proposals from licensed real estate brokers and to enter into the agreement with the broker. I would request that prior to entering into the agreement, we have a conversation with council once again so that we can understand what the strategy that the administration contemplates to handle these properties specifically may be, since the impact on the housing market and the localities potentially quite big one. And secondly, since this is an opportunity for redevelopment of those properties that probably won't come around for a long, long time again, or potentially is a opportunity. And then the third factor to consider, of course, is the impact on the residents, which I have heard consistent sensitivity to current tenants, I should say. The impact on the current tenants from the administration. So I think everybody's on the same page in terms of providing a fair and just, fair and full notice about any potential changes there. Since council mentioned that as a top concern. I'm hoping that we're going to have continued, full communication as we proceed through this.
I would certainly echo those sentiments. Mr. Sylvester from the planning department is here tonight. Would you like to speak to some of those?
Yes, absolutely. Mr. Chair, members of council, specifically related to the RFP. You know, following us going out to the RFP process, we'd be happy to include City Council in that selection of whoever that broker is going to be. We'd be happy to provide our recommended broker to Committee of the Whole or to the body of your choosing. So we'd be happy to provide that, Councilman Bullock. To your other comments, we do feel this is a timely matter and feel that this is the selling time of season. So, you know, it is our intent to not list all the properties at one time as we discuss. Can you guys hear Rebecca? Maybe, no. It is our intent to stagger the listing. So we wouldn't necessarily list all the properties at once as we discussed at Committee of the Whole on the sixth.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, just real quick, and I believe your communication to us via email also through the fact that you have some pretty thorough property condition reports on each of these properties, and that affidavits of a potential buyer would have to be secured. And we're going to sort of assume these correction notices, which that's basically what they are. These are notices for correcting certain things. And that's all in place. So the idea that there's a, there's a port and sale inspection, you've already done the inspection, already done our due diligence to figure out exactly what corrections need to be made to bring these properties up to code. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Very good. So, once a buyer is identified, that step's already taken care of. They can see that listing, that correction listing immediately.
And Councilman Anderson, your process is correct. So any future buyer would have an affidavit. They would see the correction notice that identifies the health and safety issues on the inside and the outside of any property. And they would sign an affidavit in the building department explaining that they would take care of those items on that affidavit.
And most of the items on that affidavit would require a building permit. I would imagine if there's a correction notice, there's certain things that don't require a permit. Most of them would, so you'd be able, the planning department, the housing department would be able to track the progress on improving any of these corrections at the time once the property is sold.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thanks to everyone. Councilman Marks?
Mr. President, I have a question for Mr. Sylvester. I understand from our meeting. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. It's my understanding that once a realtor is decided upon, that realtor will determine the listing price of the home, correct?
That's correct.
And will you notify council of that also? I would appreciate that. If we would get notification when that realtor is chosen, what the homes will be listed for?
We'd be happy to.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman O'Malley?
So just to clarify, I asked this question when we had our last committee, the whole. I know that the tenants will be given the first crack at those homes that they're currently in. Will they be, the price offered to them be the appraised value? Or will it be what the broker determines to be the selling, sale price of the house?
It would be the broker's opinion at that point, at fair market value.
Okay. Any additional discussion on ordinance 30-16? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Mr. Chair, we don't have a motion yet, do we?
Correct. I would move that we adopt ordinance 30-16.
Motion, motion seconded?
And I would amend, and I'll see if I can get a second, but move to amend Section 1 to change the wording of the Director of Planning and Development to Director of Public Safety, or his or her designate.
Section 2. In Section 2.
Okay. So we have a motion pending to amend Sections 1 and 2 of ordinance 30-16 to strike the reference to the Director of Planning and Development and insert the mayor.
Actually think, I actually think that you're covering just the Section 1, because the director.
You can call the mayor the director, what do you suggest?
Director of Public Safety, or his or her designate.
I see, I understand. That's fine. Just Section 1.
So my motion is to Section 1, to repeat the motion to change the Director of Planning and Development to the Director of Public Safety.
Thank you.
Or his or her designate.
So we have that motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the motion and second to amend? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry, we'll need a roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Mallon?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
That motion passes. Now, we have a. We have a motion to adopt. I would second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Or I'm sorry, we'll need a roll call vote on this as it's amended version.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bullock?
Yes.
Litton?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Mallon?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Ordinance 31-16, an ordinance to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the Codified Ordances to provide for the publication of such new matter.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to defer? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Communication from Council President O'Leary regarding Lakewood Community Relations Advisory Commission appointment.
Thank you. I would direct your attention to my communication on the docket. I have the utmost confidence that Ms. Howell will serve our community well. She has a demonstrated commitment to our community generally, but also many specific segments of the community, including our immigrant population. And for that, I thank her and look forward to her service. I move that that communication be received.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion to receive and file the communication? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Communication from Councilmember Litton regarding swimming pools.
Councilmember Litton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dear colleagues, in 1974, Lakewood City Council adopted a provision in our sanitary code which restricted the installation of swimming pools inside our front yards. I appreciate the foresight of our predecessors to envision that an increasing number of residents might want to install pools on their properties and wanted to ensure that this was done in a way that was both safe and aesthetically pleasing. Acknowledging there may be unique circumstances where the consideration of a variance could be desired, I'm proposing that the provisions of Chapter 1722 of the sanitary code related to the location of swimming pools be moved into the zoning code. The sanitary code does not currently allow for appeals, and this move would allow for a variance under the zoning code if unique site conditions exist and the other standards of the variances are met. I ask that this proposed addition to the zoning code be placed on first reading and be sent to both the planning commission and at the same time to our Rules and Ordinances Committee for consideration. Yours in service.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication from Councilmember Litton.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? I just thank Councilmember Litton for bringing this code fix to our attention and look forward to addressing it in committee.
On a 90-degree day, the talk about pools is not.
Yeah, the first day of summer, very fitting.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion to receive and file the communication from Councilmember Litton? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Ordinance 32-16, and ordinance amended in Section 172201. Location of family pools, Section 1121.10. Additional accessory structure regulations in Section 1123.10. Additional accessory structure regulations of the Codified Ordances of the city in order to provide for the regulation of the location of solely swimming pools within the zoning code.
Move to simultaneously refer ordinance 32-16 to Planning Commission and Rules and Ordinances Committee.
Second and second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that referral? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Confirm an application for D5 and D6 transfers to Salt 17621232 by Detroit Avenue.
This particular establishment, I believe, lies in Councilmember Anderson's board. And I believe we're in receipt of a report on this item.
No reason to object.
Thank you. As such, I would move that we file without objection.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to file without objection? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes.
Confirm an application for a new D1 classification to Thomasville India Garden 1441 to Detroit.
This particular establishment, I believe, lies in Councilmember Litton's board. And I believe that we're also in.
We're actually not.
We'll move to defer. Thank you for clarifying that. We've got a motion to defer. I would second that motion. Any discussion on the motion to defer? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. That brings us to the end of our docket agenda for this evening. Prior to getting to any additional announcements from council, we'll take public comment. A number of people are signed in, and the first is Brian Essie.
Thank you. Brian Essie, 15306 Edgewater Drive. Signed up to talk about political propaganda, but I want to start by asking council members to strongly consider the Edgewater Sewer Project to reimburse or obtain estimates for those 33 homeowners that wish I won. I think I've written you an email about it, and any questions, you can, you know, contact me and my neighbors. We're in a political season, I think. I understand, if I'm correct, I was just told this and I haven't read it, that six out of seven of you may have been part of a committee to kick off a fundraiser for some, some efforts to defeat the referendum that is at stake. Totally your prerogative, but I want to take us back to October of last year. I received this postcard. I wrote a post on the deck about it. It was built Lakewood's, I called it the 13 Pinocchios, or 13 false and misleading statements in this postcard. I was outraged by how dishonest that was, and I wrote a post on the deck talking about personal consequences that would ensue had continued lying resulted in a victory for that campaign, and it did. I have here four other postcards I received from my home, at my home. There may have been more. Sometimes mail is lost. They're all from the No campaign. All four different, all included continued lies and misstatements. I'm not going to go into those because I don't have enough time. I recently learned that $50,000 was paid to that PAC by LHA. And that that may have comprised about 98% of the money that was raised by the PAC. And I understand there were only 16 people, individuals that donated. One was a Cleveland Clinic trustee, Mr. Gable. Three others were elected officials, Mrs. Beebe, Mrs. Marks, and Mr. Bullock. Mr. Bullock, I understand, even loaned campaign funds from his campaign to that campaign. At the same time, Mayor Summers, Councilman Madigan, Councilman Bullock were all part of LHA. Mr. Litton was as well. This money was transferred to this PAC and used by a small handful of people, as near as I can tell, to advocate something by lies and propaganda. That's cheating. Now, I hope, as is your prerogative, the six of the seven that have chosen to go into the new campaign, that you will take every effort to make sure that the campaign is conducted honestly, with true statements of fact, and not innuendo, not, not lies. So, and by virtue of the donations, I don't suggest that, for example, Mrs. Marks may have known that the LHA money was coming in. But anyone who knew and participated in having public charitable money that was designed for all of the Lakewood citizens to be used for dishonest propaganda by a public relations firm at pretty cost postage is to me just, just morally reprehensible. So, four of the 23 trustees were Cleveland Clinic employees. Two more were Cleveland Clinic trustees. Again, our three elected officials and now our newly elected Mr. Litton. I know Mr. Sealy was part of this endeavor. I know Mr. McEwen was part of this endeavor with Built Lakewood. And I know Mr. Aldrich. I have no idea how many more people at City Hall were part of Built Lakewood and this propaganda that is using essentially public money to defeat other citizens in a campaign. Just, just sickens me as a citizen and a taxpayer. You know, that was just the beginning of it, because I know that campaign, that money was spent on advertising with the Lakewood Observer and possibly other advertisers, some fake newspaper. And I can't remember if that was LHA. LHA did a push poll that was spent on, with public money. And I know people contested it's public money, but we all knew this thing was going down and that money would have been returned to the city. So that's essentially public money. Just, just terrible. And Mr. Mayor Summers has changed his testimony about this issue, this important issue, this critical key issue in an election. It was, it was just a narrow victory. I don't know, 52 to 48, that's a 4% swing. That's just about 400, 500 votes. Thank you.
Yes, yes, that's true. That's true. You too.
You too.
Our next speaker is Dr. Kilroy.
Yeah, I'm Dr. Terry Kilroy, one-five-four-three-one at Edgewater Drive. My first talk today was actually an attempt to talk to Dr. Welsh about some issues that I had. This talk was really to talk about the concept of freestanding ERs. Most people don't know the history of them. It was first started by Mount Sinai about twenty-five years ago, because Mount Sinai was downtown, trapped between the clinic and UH. What was happening was, is the UH and the clinic was siphoning off all paying customers. Mount Sinai was going broke because it was taking care of all the underserved people, and so they put a freestanding emergency room in Solon. Okay? The purpose of that ER was to bring patients who were paying customers down to Mount Sinai. At that time, there was a huge debate down in Columbus by the regulatory people, locally by the Academy of Medicine, which I was on the board with, about whether this is appropriate or not, because that freestanding ER was not placed to benefit the community, it was placed to benefit the core hospital. This has become a fairly standard thing now. The clinic, when it's freestanding ER in Avon, one exit from St. John's ER, you can go to Brunswick, there's a UH clinic thing virtually across the street from each other. You can go across the county, and you'll find that UH, Metro, and the clinic have all placed all these competitive ERs, not because of local community need, but because of their personal need to get paying customers from the suburbs to come downtown, so that they're just not stuck with all the non-paying customers. So I think whenever you think of a freestanding ER, you should understand it's not done for us, it's done for the hospital network. Okay? And so with that in mind, if we're going to say that this freestanding ER is going to substitute for a hospital, we're obligated to find some way to assure that the ER will really support us and accomplish our local goals, not the network's goal of economic advancement. Unfortunately, right now with the setup you have, all we can do is beg for data, okay? Which they control, and I can be assured that you're not going to get any data that's contrary to what they want to put out there. Okay? There's also no exact specification or enforcement of what services are going to be provided. Okay? So that's kind of my first comment. The second thing is, is I keep hitting on, you've got to do some kind of quality control. Okay? Why does that happen? Okay? Well, when I was director of the ICU again, let me, we did a quality analysis of Lakewood and the ER at Lakewood. Yeah, the head of pulmonary, I was the head of the ICU, and the head of infectious disease went over every pneumonia case diagnosed by our ER. Forty percent of them did not have pneumonia, by three experts. Okay? ER doctors are very good at immediate triage, they're very good at short-term stabilization. They do not do definitive care, they do not do definitive stabilization. They're incapable of doing things. You have a ruptured viscous, you have an acute appendix, the ER is not going to help you. The quicker you get to somebody who can do definitive care, the better. So when you're regulating your local ER, you have to know those things. Okay? The third thing is, that comes up from my standpoint, is, again, these ERs are designed to keep the patients in their economic network, okay? Which is why they don't call me when my patients come to the ER. My patients actually call me from the ER. Okay? And, you know, I call the ER doctor, and I say, "Well, why aren't you calling me? This patient told you I'm their doctor. I know them, they have a lung problem, I'm a lung expert." It's a thing they haven't. Dr. Welsh one time told me she didn't have time to call primary care doctors. Okay? So the bottom line is, is that this is about stealing patients. This is about disenfranchising the local physicians. Okay? If you wonder why, you know, twenty-five years ago, there were six lung doctors, and now there's only one, it's that if you take all the patients away from us, and you disconnect us from our patients, we cannot survive. Okay? The final thing is, is who does the follow-up? Okay? In a hospital-attached ER, essentially what they do is they have a call list. They get an individual physician who's on that call list, who's agreed to see those patients that come in that night. How's that being done now? I'm not on any call list, I don't know any of my friends who are on a call list. So essentially what they're doing is, they come to the ER, if it's something that does not need to be admitted, and as the ER guys tell you, most of their patients don't, they refer to a Cleveland Clinic physician, at the expense of everybody else, at the expense of wishes of the patient. And so if you don't get in there and understand what's going on in that ER in an enforceable manner, you're basically, again, losing control of healthcare in this community. We already don't have a Department of Health, we don't have a, you know, a safety net like the hospital, and so now you're not even going to be able to tell what's going on in this ER. If you can't resolve that problem, you're getting out of the business.
I appreciate your comments.
Exactly.
It is a darn shame that our city-owned full-service hospital is closed. Because of improper bidding and Cleveland Clinic Foundation lies about it not being profitable, this area of fifty-two thousand people lost to a wealthy, able area of less than half the population of Lakewood. It was an excellent deal for the clinic. Many seniors and nursing homes and children in Lakewood need a full-service hospital, not a world-class health center. This community doesn't need a big, modern, glass building, clinic-style. We must save our city from a big, greedy monopoly. Justice must prevail. Voters for the hospital need to bring back our much-needed inpatient beds. You must repeal the deal and do what is ethically and morally right for the citizens of Lakewood. When nine hundred jobs and income tax revenue is lost, this is also an economic issue. An old saying is, "You can't fight City Hall, but save Lakewood Hospital citizens still believe in fighting to open our hospital." Thank you.
Our next speaker.
I had my hand raised. First of all, my name's Coletagram, twelve-eight-six, Chase Avenue. I had my hand raised, which all of you see. It was in regards, I did not have a copy of what was on the docket, and I'm here in regards to the hospitals, the homes by the hospital. It was in the Lakewood Sun Post in the, in last Thursday's paper, and I have some questions that I want to ask. But first of all, Mr. Essie, you better watch what you're saying, you're going to have a policeman on your front porch again. And one other thing before I start. I have friends that are Republicans, and they've decided to be greeters for the upcoming Republican convention. And I got a call from one of my friend and said, "Clara, you'll find it interesting who's sitting in front of me." It was a training period for people to learn how to properly greet people. And she said, "Guess who it is?" And I kiddingly said, "Mayor Summers." And she said, "I can't believe you're right." So Mayor Summers, a registered Democrat, is out there greeting people at the airport to come in to the Republican convention. All right. I don't know how many of you have known that I have fought constantly, year after year, in regards to the blatant examples of the city getting away with never having to pay the price. The first example is the ever-famous Curtis Building, which we, of course, now are making it a historical building, and why don't we make all these ten houses historical buildings, and then that would give us some more help? Now, these homes were supposed to generate money to come into City Hall, and there's no statement on how much the people are paying their rent there. And there's three houses that are completely empty. And there's a terminology, it says here, "The Lakewood Hospital Association and the city purchased the houses decades ago." So how long have they had these ten houses? That's your first question. Does anybody know any answer on that? Hello?
So as we've stated, this is not a question and answer, period. We're happy to respond at the end of your comments.
Oh, my God, honest to God, Mr. Olery. It's your ward where this is all transpiring.
Yeah.
Have you looked into anything as far as what's going on with that?
Ma'am.
And Mr. Bullock before you would have the area.
Yes, I have. This is not a question and answer, period.
Okay, I'll have a push-up statement.
Happy to respond to your comments at the conclusion of your comments.
Is city planner Jason Russell, is he here? Are you Jason Russell?
No.
No? Oh, okay. He makes a statement about, there are some maintenance issues at all of the homes. In other words, all of these homes need repairs. Now, right now on Chase Avenue, we're getting cited for these God-blessed street sections that they want to repair. Don't get me going on this. I got it. There was nothing wrong with the two sections. They took a grinder and they ground out the corner of the God-blessed corner of the section and replaced it with different color cement, but you just had no option. You had no option, you had to go along with it. I want to know why all these houses were allowed to go down the drink and the money that should be coming again into City Hall, of course, isn't. Okay, the city is proposing, offering the existing renters the first opportunity to purchase the houses. Well, what is the rents that they're paying there right now? And I want to know, why are all these people allowed to pay a total of, after expenses including property taxes, the city will net only about four thousand six hundred dollars for six months? So this isn't like this has just come up in a week, or a month, or a year, or two years. This has been going on forever, but you cannot get any answers. So I'm going to patiently wait here and see if you can answer some of those questions.
Sure. I'd be happy to respond to a couple of those points. As you mentioned, the houses were purchased many, many years ago, decades ago, by the Lakewood Hospital Association at that time in anticipation of hospital expansion.
When you say many years, how many years?
Excuse me, excuse me. You asked, and I respond to your comments, I'm responding to your comments now. As I stated before, this is not a question and answer, period. Those houses were acquired for that purpose, that purpose never came to pass. In the interim, the city has benefited from the revenue from those rentals as those properties were transferred from the Lakewood Hospital Association to the city pursuant to the proposal that was ratified last December, authorizing the new master agreement. So the city has currently been benefiting from those rental revenues. There, as you mentioned, are a couple vacant properties, those properties are vacant at this time in expectation that they will be sold. It simply does not make a lot of sense to put them up on the market for rent, knowing that within a couple of months, they're going to be turned around and sold. Most renters would not want to find themselves renting a property for that short of a period of time. In addition, as has been mentioned, given the disruption to the properties of maintenance activities and showing them prior to their sale, it's frankly a better city purpose to not have those properties occupied at this time. In addition, there will be, as was mentioned, some maintenance that's done to best position these properties on the market, so that the city can be sure that the housing product that is available is not only up to the city's code, but also gets the city a great value for those properties. And so we do plan to undertake those improvements to the properties to make sure that they're a great addition in a long-term way to the neighborhood once they're occupied as, or occupied buildings or potentially rentals.
People of Lakewood, when we get cited, when we get cited, we have to either pay the fines or fix the properties up.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Why is this allowed to happen? And you're saying decades? I wonder, it's ridiculous.
No, ma'am, I never said that violations of the properties have existed for decades. And I, again, this is not a question and answer, period, so I thank you for your comments, and I hope that I provided some helpful answers.
You're not thanking me for anything.
And we'll move on to our next speaker, who's left with that.
It's just absolutely ridiculous.
Council President Olery, I'd like to respond with the honor of seeing you.
Yeah, thank you. I actually, I welcome your addition to that. I note on that point as well, I'm very encouraged to hear that you are going to be representing the city of Lakewood in that capacity. I know that Mayor Jackson, for example, also a registered Democrat, frequently receives the president when he comes to visit, even when that president was a Republican. Here in Lakewood, I know that we stand for the proposition that regardless of our disagreements with the people, we welcome them. And I know that we embody that spirit here on council. I'm encouraged to hear that the mayor is embodying that spirit and representing that out to the public as well, that regardless of the positions and disagreements that we have, even when we think that those positions are not entirely tethered to reality, we still welcome those people and encourage them to enjoy what our city has to offer. And I think that that's a wonderful thing. Mayor Summers.
Thank you. Actually, this region will be hosting fifty thousand visitors. They're going to come from all over the country. The international press will represent the world, and those folks will be reporting on their experience here. The Committee on Hospitality, and that's the emphasis of the key word is hospitality, is trying to do its best to make sure these fifty thousand visitors have a great experience in our town, and will go forth back to their communities and talk about how great Cleveland is. This is really about our regional experience. I am not interested in the politics of the Republican Party. And in fact, if your friend had been candid enough to tell you that that training was really about emphasizing that no one who is a volunteer in the hospitality should emphasize any partisan position whatsoever, that our job is to welcome these folks to our community and hope that they have a great experience and do everything we can to make sure that's the case. They need about eight thousand volunteers to pull this off well. Lakewood stepped forward and said, "We're going to recruit as many as we can. We are going to focus on the airport because it's close to our homes." And there's about forty of us who are going to be out at doing our job to make sure this is a good experience. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to work on behalf of the region. Each one of us in this room has an obligation, if we find ourselves talking to one of those persons, to help them have a good experience here, regardless of their political persuasion. This is about hospitality, and I know that everyone will do what they can to be hospitable.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, and thank you for representing Lakewood in that way.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I wanted to provide one very brief clarification, and I think it was really, you know, the, most of the houses that are involved in this particular transfer are city of Lakewood owned, not LHA-owned. A couple of them had previously been LHA-owned. Most of them have been city of Lakewood-owned through the duration of the lease to the Lakewood Hospital Association of the hospital. So I think all but two homes, actually, are city of Lakewood-owned homes from the beginning, and the remaining two we've purchased now from LHA. And I can just tell you, just as an example, two of the homes on Bell were purchased by the city from private owners in the very early nineteen eighties. So that would give you the vintage of when, I think, most of these transactions occurred, and the city purchased those when it was running the hospital, before it entered into the original lease agreement with LHA. Just to say that. Thanks.
Thanks, I appreciate that clarification.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilboy.
A further addition to that factual record, though, I do recall dealing with the Lakewood Hospital Public Works Department or their physical plant manager, who was the contact for those properties. So I think, as, you know, even though the city owned the hard assets and the property, and still does of the hospital, it was LHA that was the operator throughout those years and essentially was the caretaker. And I recall having to do a little pushback related to, some of their plants were less than optimal maintenance at one point. There was termites that were a problem. But at any rate, so my recollection is that the agent managing the properties, regardless of ownership, in recent years was LHA.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So we're on the same page.
As they were leased.
Yeah, and that fact has changed with the master agreement and the transfer. So I think the significance is, this is an opportunity for a fresh review and a white glove treatment, and I think... And I think that it's quite possible, Mrs. Graham, that any property in the city could have violations that the city may not have fully cited for at any given time. And all that's happening here is that we now have the opportunity and are taking, making sure that that opportunity is taken advantage of to do a full, froated quality assessment before those homes go on the market. The proceeds, frankly, the community benefits twice. The proceeds come back to the city. But in my mind, more important is the opportunity to, uh, do a quality job with these homes and get them into, uh, private hands that could be successful at maintaining those homes and improving them. Thank you.
Um, our, thank you, Councilman Bullock, and thanks to the administration for those clarifications. Uh, our next speaker is Leslie Bass.
Can you hear me? My name is Leslie Bass. I live at 12506 Edgewater Drive. And, um, there's nothing impressive about me. I don't have a big college degree, a whole lot of list of fancy jobs or anything like that that would impress anybody. And, and I'm coming here right now behind doctors and other people who, who have certificates and proven history of service. But you know what? I know how to dial 911. And I know the difference between going to a place that has a hospital and not have to be shipped anywhere else. And we don't have that anymore. And you don't have anything here in your discussions with your departments and with your doctors and with your visiting doctors in Cleveland Clinic to convince me that what we're getting is good enough for us. They're taking us and sorting us at that middle center. And I'm not blaming the doctors. I'm getting tired of people blaming me doctors. I'm not arguing with the doctors, but the doctors don't get to decide what world-class care is going to be delivered. That's a money decision. That's the reason why they came here. They've had years to work on this and to gut our hospital and tell us we've got to travel to Avon. Well, if we don't need a hospital here, why do we need Avon? I mean, you think I'm that stupid? You need to tell me how to dial 911? And I haven't noticed that there's no hospital there anymore? That's one of the rich legacies of Lakewood was the hospital service that they built there and it got squashed. And now I know a hospital needs to be adaptable. Of course it does. It has such changing technology, changing needs in the population. How stupid do you think I am? We don't have a hospital. There's nothing you can give me to replace that. Nothing. This little medical box you're giving me is nothing. I want my hospital back. I want to be able to go to my hospital and just be able to treat me right there and not have to be transported here or sorted here. I have two-tier emergency care. What? This is broken stuff compared to what we had. And maybe it needed to grow and maybe it needed to change. It didn't need to be gutted like it was gutted. And there's nothing you can discuss me about your departments and your performance numbers and your reports from Cleveland Clinic that saturate the area. And the people don't get the same defense that Cleveland Clinic does because they got the money, because they came to you and used you as a shoehorn for their business plan. They needed to get rid of Lakewood because Lakewood was profitable because we had good patients here, hard-working people from border to border, one of the most populated areas, I understand, between Chicago and New York. Yeah, they wanted our business. That means we put the key to the hospital. And it's been several years now, and I know you think I'm late talking about a dead horse. But it is also honorable and necessary leadership to look at a situation even later, when you thought you understood and maybe later when the facts come out, it's honorable and necessary leadership to say, "I've had to reconsider my position because the people of Lakewood, they earned a right to have their own hospital."
Our next speaker is Joanna Small.
Can you hear me? Um, Joanne Spallwood, 1248 West Clifton. Um, I didn't prepare anything tonight. I just wanted to share a little bit about my personal experience at Lakewood Emergency Department. Um, I think with so much negativity, I wanted to share a positive experience that I had. Um, in March, I had to go to the Lakewood, um, ER for a potentially a serious heart condition. And I went there and within minutes, I was seen by a doctor. And I had a team of doctors and nurses who were knowledgeable and thorough and were great communicators with me. Um, I had lots of tests done. I had labs, which we got back imme, almost immediately. I had x-rays. I had an EKG. Um, I had a whole battery of tests done and I, I, it exceeded my expectations, the, the level of care that I got. And I was actually really shocked. I, it was the first time, I hadn't been to Lakewood ER even when it was, um, a hospital for years. So I didn't really know what to expect, but it exceeded my expectations. And I just felt like it was important to kind of put it on the record that, because everything's been so negative in the community about it, that I had a great experience there. And I'm sure there's other people like myself that have had a great experience. And I just wanted people to know that.
Thank you. I really appreciate you sharing that story with us tonight. Our next speaker who signed in is Joanne Gerhart.
Joanne Gerhart, 16722 Clifton Boulevard. I'm a senior citizen, you know? And I've been looking at this brochure that we handed out. And okay, I've been looking at it and thinking, geez, Cleveland Clinic, Lakewood Emergency Department, every day, every hour, doctors and nurses, Cleveland Clinic, Lakewood Emergency Department are ready to offer emergency care for all ages, are full service, et cetera, et cetera. It goes down, bullet point. Then, on the other side, it says, Cleveland Clinic, Lakewood Emergency Department offers, and these are the bullet points, says, I'll elaborate on some of them, board-certified emergency medicine, medical physicians and physician assistants, registered nurses, paramedics, complete radiology services. Goes down the list. And then, you know, I had to put my real glasses on and really look, certain weekday hours and said, oh, that's kind of interesting. What do they mean by that? You know, they went through the list of all those things. I guess, I just have a question of what we really are getting in this quote lovely brochure colored and everything. I mean, it's really nice, but I just don't understand what we are getting as a citizen of Lakewood. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to comment. I just would like to comment on your statement. If you look at that, um, I noticed that as well, that asterix is regarding the MRI, that that's only available at certain hours, I believe. All the other services are 24/7.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that clarification, Councilwoman Marks. Our next speaker is Kevin Young.
I live at 1598 Albert Avenue. I love Jammy Buggers hamburgers. Aren't they the best? And you know this Burgers to, what is it? Burgers to Burgers over here? Fantastic hamburgers. Awesome. You know, I'm sure if we visited the world headquarters of McDonald's and asked, "Who made the best hamburgers?", I'm sure they wouldn't say, "Well, you know, this place in Lakewood, Jammy Buggers, has really great hamburgers." I'm sure that's not what we would hear. We would hear them tell us that McDonald's makes the best hamburgers. And I'm sure we would be treated to a long and detailed description of how the cows are raised and fed, the care that is taken in the slaughter and the processing of the beef, and, uh, how carefully those fine burgers are cooked and served. Uh, it is exactly what we would expect to hear, and chances are, we would not believe half of what they say. Dr. Judith Welsh is obviously a very lovely lady, and I congratulate her on where she's gotten in life. I know, and I'm sure, that she's worked very, very hard to reach the position that she's at today. But Dr. Welsh is doing what is required of her as a Cleveland Clinic employee. And in doing so, we must take what she says with a grain of salt. There are alarming shortcomings in having a freestanding emergency department like the one that we have in this community. These shortcomings will assure that there will be empty chairs at holiday tables in Lakewood that otherwise would be occupied if it hadn't been for the closing of our full-service hospital. The mess that is the closing of Lakewood Hospital came as city officials only listened to clinic employees about what was right ultimately for the clinic instead of what was right for Lakewood's citizens. And here we go again. We heard tonight from a Cleveland Clinic employee about how our emergency department is so great and so right for our citizens. There's another side to the story, but in a maneuver of weakness, Dr. Welsh was ushered away, avoiding earnest and much-needed questioning by our Dr. Kilroy and the others in this room. We can only assume again, our city is taking another opportunity to hide the truth from us. Dr. Kilroy has told you about the shortcomings of our freestanding ED. He's a five-star rated doctor. The freestanding ED is not right for our city of over 51,000. We are not second-class citizens. We are not going to tolerate the dictates of a greedy Cleveland clinic. We deserve a full-service hospital. When is this council going to stop expecting every, accepting everything that the clinic says is true? When are you going to stop representing the interest of the clinic while ignoring the better interests of the citizens that you pretend to represent? We're tired of this chamber of lies. We're tired of this chamber of deceptions. We are tired of being wronged. Lakewood deserves a full-service hospital. Lakewood wants real doctors, not spin doctors. Thank you.
Our next speaker to speak is Heather Maybeck.
Hi, my name is Heather, and I just wanted to share a story with council about the emergency department in Lakewood. In between Christmas and New Year's, my mom got sick. We usually go shopping on day after Christmas. And she says, you know, "I'm not feeling good. I'm going to stay home." And I checked on her two days later and I'd never seen her look so sick. My mom doesn't live in Lakewood. She lives in North Olmsted. And I chose to drive several extra minutes to Lakewood's Emergency Department, and I will never regret that decision because I don't know that she would be here with us today had I not done that. When we got to Lakewood, she was, I helped her out of the car and I set her on a bench, went to park my car so I could help her walk inside. And I didn't even have to because Trias saw her, came with a wheelchair and got her. We didn't wait. They took her into her room. They got all of her vitals. They had all of her medical tests done. She had doctors, lab work, x-rays, and was diagnosed correctly. She had went to an urgent care in her local area a day or two before, which is, you know, they said, you know, "You got this and go." And they took such phenomenal care. They talked to her like she were a person. They sat down and they spent time with her. And, you know, in a world where everything is go, 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 for somebody to actually sit down, look at you in the face, make eye contact with you and talk to you like you are a human being and simplify and make it so you can understand what they're saying, medical is scary and they use big words. And for those of us that don't have those degrees and don't know, I'm a daughter. I, my mom is probably one of the most important people in my life. For them to make us understand what was going on and what needed to happen, the procedures that I heard Dr. Welsh describe earlier today, I, I just, I couldn't help but sit there and shake my head because it is exactly what happened. We were greeted and taken, like people, into a room and treated very kindly with the utmost of care. We did opt for a admission into the hospital, and she spent several days in a different Cleveland Clinic hospital because she was that sick. But she got fantastic care and it does not surprise me when she's saying that the people that are being treated there are happy because if we could have given them tens on that five-point survey, we would have given them tens with how well they took care of her. We actually changed all of her doctors over to doctors that are facilitated around Lakewood Hospital, and she doesn't even live in your community. So I think that in Northeast Ohio, we are incredibly lucky to not only have Cleveland Clinic and to have university hospitals. We have so many people that come to Northeast Ohio to get lung transplants or to get kidney transplants or to have heart surgery done. I mean, foreign dignitaries come to Northeast Ohio because of our radical facilities. I just think that, you know, shooting down, you know, this freestanding ER that is giving, you know, such great care and helping people and really, you know, it, I'm not a resident of Lakewood and I felt the need to come here and say thank you for the services your hospital is providing because I have my mom because of it. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Our final speaker who signed up to speak is Tara Pepper.
She told Brian, she couldn't be here and Brian wanted to go in her place.
Well, I'm sorry if we're not joined by Ms. Pepper this evening. Uh, I will turn it over to council for any announcements. Members of council, yes, Councilwoman Maddox.
Really quick, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to note that P W, which is a restaurant in Hollywood, was recently rated as one of the top five most romantic restaurants in America by Travel Magazine. So, uh, if you're, uh, you know, not single like me, uh, you should, uh, make a reservation there. It's a, it's a great place for, uh, Brian, uh, just wanted to congratulate him.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And I want to, uh, put in a personal plug for the lobster disc.
I got a gizzard.
Well, even better. Any, any additional announcements from the administration?
We'll see you all at the Solstice Steps tomorrow. It should be cooler. It should be clearer.
Excellent. Looking forward to it. Uh, for those who don't know, we do have the Solstice Steps event tomorrow night, uh, running from 6 until sunset, and we hope to see you there. Thanks, everyone. Your turn.